Good evening Chair Purcell, Vice Chair Richmond, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jones, and guests. It is my honor to recognize an extraordinary group of students this evening and the dedicated educators who have guided them. Tonight, we celebrate the 2025 Youth Poet Laureates, Students Whose Voices Rise Above the Ordinary. These young poets use their words to speak truth, foster connection, and give voice to hope. We also recognize the teachers who have stood behind them on this journey, mentors who have nurtured their voices, and created spaces where poetry can flourish. Being named a Youth Poet Laureate at the school or district level is no small accomplishment. These students began their journeys in school-level clubs, creative writing courses, and English classes. In February, they participated in a two-day workshop led by our North Carolina Poet Laureate Jackie Shelton Green alongside over thirty peers from all three of our high schools. Following the workshop, students submitted an application and an original poem that was judged by members of our schools, our district, as well as published authors from across North Carolina. It is with great pride that I introduce to you this evening our 2025 Orange County Schools' Youth Poet Laureate Miranda Silva Coros. Miranda is an eleventh-grade student at Partnership Academy High School. Congratulations, Miranda, on this outstanding achievement. You're a gifted writer, a natural leader, and we look forward to your voice shining brightly as you serve as an ambassador for poetry across our district. Joining Miranda, I am proud to recognize our 2025 Cedar Ridge High School Youth Poet Laureate Olivia Keratinuto, a ninth-grade student. Olivia demonstrates a strong command of language, and her impactful poetry moved our review team. We look forward to seeing Olivia grow in her craft as she works alongside Miranda to bring poetry to life for others. And finally, we recognize our other finalist, our 2025 Partnership Academy Poet Laureate Alyssa's application poem was heartfelt and powerful, showcasing her natural talent as a writer. We're excited to support Alyssa as she steps into this leadership role and shares her love of poetry with the broader community. And finally, before we conclude, I want to acknowledge two exceptional educators without whom this program would not be possible, Ms. Amari Beatty and Ms. Laura Eisenhower. Ms. Beatty and Ms. Eisenhower have created thriving literary communities at Cedar Ridge High School and Partnership Academy. They pour their time, their energy, and their hearts into supporting student writers and building programs that elevate student voice. Thank you to everyone who supports this growing tradition in Orange County Schools. We are proud to share our 2025 Youth Poet Laureates.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
We're gonna have our picture made again. Okay.
Thank you all very much, and if you were at the night of poetry that we had at Cedar Ridge High School, you got to experience these wonderful students reading their poetry and then other students reading poetry, too. It was a very enlightening night, so if you ever get a chance to come to that, that would be great. You would enjoy it. Thank you to Mr. Farrington, I see back there, and we appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is the Orange Middle School Battle of the Book winners for the state, and I see lots of students over here.
While the team gathers, we'll get you warmed up. Good evening, everyone. To everyone here tonight and watching at home, read books, and you never know the places you will go, and I know y'all understand that reference. So, thank you to the North Carolina School Media Library Association, School Library Media Association, which hosts this annual competition for elementary, middle school, and high school students. We are excited to bring forward the 2025 Middle School Battle of the Books state champions from Orange Middle School and their advisors. Quick facts, and then I'm getting out of your way. On March 4th, Orange Middle School won the district competition, and on March 22nd, their second consecutive regional contest. And if anybody knows that I'm getting anything wrong, it'll be these people behind me who can read twenty books and remember everything. Since that day, on May 1st, when they traveled to the regional, to the state contest in Statesville, they have, they have had a very adventurous life, and it started before the school year even began, because the list of books comes, is the list of books ready for next year? Okay, they're already, they're already there. They're already there, and they will tell you about it in just a moment. They richly deserve the recognition that they are receiving right now, and we're very, very excited for them. Only four hundred, only four hundred schools around the state participate in this competition, so, you know, to be, anyway, I'm gonna get out of your way and introduce the Orange Middle School Battle of the Books state champions.
Thank you Chair and Vice Chair for inviting us here. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for all of the recognition. I just wanna say I'm so proud of the students behind me. It's, I'm trying not to cry, because some of these kids have been with me for three years. They, I'm so proud of them. They are not only readers, but how many of you are athletes? How many of you are three-sport athletes? How many of you do equestrian or tap dance or other clubs besides Battle of the Books or other things? You manage sport teams. They're doing it all. They're wonderful students, they keep their grades up, they're reading twenty books, not just once, not just twice, three times, four times before our competition. Jack, an eighth grader, has been on the team for three years, has been to regionals three times, been to regionals as the winner twice, and has now finally and rightly deserved his state-winning medal. So, I mean, we have other eighth-grade students that have participated as well. Some of them are not here tonight because they're out doing their other extracurriculars. So, they just deserve all the recognition, and just thank you so much for allowing them to be recognized like they deserve. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Great job. Congratulations. I like that better. Congratulations. 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 Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
For everything.
Thank you so much.
Here we go again. They know what to do. Great job. Okay, up next, we have Emily Myers, who is going to talk to us about our Governor's School nominees for 2025. Ms. Myers.
Good evening Board members, Dr. Jones, community members attending in person, and those of you watching online. My name is Emily Myers. I'm the Director of Integrated Academics for Orange County Schools, and I am honored to be here this evening to recognize five Orange County students who have been selected to attend the prestigious North Carolina Governor's School this summer. The North Carolina Governor's School is a four-week residential program for gifted and talented high school students that integrates academic disciplines, the arts, and unique courses on each of two campuses. Learning focuses on the exploration of the most recent ideas and concepts in each discipline, and it does not involve credit, tests, or grades. Students are selected to attend through a competitive process after being nominated by their public school unit or non-public school. We have five students attending Governor's School this year, which is wonderful, and we are gonna start with our four Red Wolves who have been selected. Our first is Olivia Sutton. Olivia will be attending in the area of English. We also have Tara Proctor. Tara is attending in the area of natural science. We have Isabella Morelli, attending in English. And we have Barclay Arnold, who I don't believe was able to be here this evening, unless I've missed him. He is attending in the area of visual art. We are pleased to recognize one Orange High School Panther who has been selected to attend Governor's School this summer, Maria Wilson. Maria is also attending in the area of English. Congratulations to our Orange County students. We look forward to hearing about your summer experience and are proud to have you represent our district.
Great job there. social studies teacher, who is the North Carolina Holocaust Teacher of the Year.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and good evening again to everyone. We are really honored to have Mrs. Selena Massey, a seventh-grade social studies teacher from Orange Middle School, come forward to be recognized for having been given the award of the Outstanding Holocaust Educator of the Year for North Carolina, for your recognition and for statewide recognition, because this is the first year this award has ever been given, and it's to a teacher here in Orange County Schools, which speaks for itself. I am gonna share a couple words of introduction, because we found out about the award, and then we just asked Mrs. Massey three simple questions. What inspired you to teach this way? Did you hope students would get out of it? And how do you know it's working? And I hope that everyone has had a chance to go and read the story, to learn what actually changes in the lives of our students when we teach to the standards, because the seventh-grade social studies standards changed about fifteen years ago. What Mrs. Massey calls "the human realities of history are important to teach both in and out of season." The North Carolina standards state that students should be able to explain how values and beliefs affect human rights, justice, and equality for different groups of people, and also compare how individuals and groups respond to stereotypes, oppression, human rights violations, and genocide. We know that that is exceptionally challenging work, no matter whether you're a student, a teacher, an adult, a child. So, we asked her to help us, and again, I would encourage everyone to learn from her students the same as her students are learning, learning from her, but we're gonna ask Mrs. Massey to share a couple minutes of, with you, about this exceptional recognition.
First, thank you to the Board of Education, Orange County Schools, my family, colleagues, guests, and especially Sharon Halpern, the Director of the Holocaust Speakers Bureau. Thank you so much for being here today. I have been truly humbled and deeply grateful to be here today, having received the 2025 Outstanding Holocaust Educator Award on behalf of the Center for Holocaust Genocide and Human Rights Education of North Carolina. The outpouring of support that I've received since this special recognition was announced has truly been overwhelming. The award, focused on the vital lessons of the Holocaust, genocide, and human rights, reminds us of unimaginable darkness and the devastating consequences of hatred and prejudice. Yet, within this darkness, there are incredible stories of courage, resilience, and compassion that deserve to be highlighted. These are powerful stories that we must continue to tell, especially to our students. It is our fundamental responsibility to ensure that the horrors of the past are not forgotten and that the inherent rights of all people are not just acknowledged, but actively protected and upheld by each new generation. Moving forward and in closing, my hope is, is that the Center for Holocaust Genocide and Human Rights Education of North Carolina will continue its vital work and strengthen its partnership with me and Orange County Schools. Together, we can ensure that our students, teachers, community members gain a deeper understanding of these crucial lessons, for it is through this understanding that we can cultivate empathy, challenge injustice, and build a future where human life is always honored. Thank you.
I did. I did. There's a lot of movement. Thank you. Thank you, Selena.
Madam Chair, I think that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work and helping get this done. It's nice to have students and teachers and principals, and thank you to Jamie Bell Williams, who is walking out the door from Orange Middle School with her teacher and students, and to Mr. Johnson, who I saw here earlier, who was with his student from Orange High School. So, we appreciate that. All right. I need a motion to adopt our stories that we must continue to tell, especially to our students. It is our fundamental responsibility to ensure that the horrors of the past are not forgotten, and that the inherent rights of all people are not just acknowledged, but actively protected and upheld by each new generation. Moving forward and in closing, my hope is that the Center for Holocaust Genocide and Human Rights Education of North Carolina will continue its vital work and strengthen its partnership with me and Orange County Schools. Together, we can ensure that our students, teachers, community members gain a deeper understanding of these crucial lessons, for it is through this understanding that we can cultivate empathy, challenge injustice, and build a future where human life is always honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Selena.
Madam Chair, I think that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work and helping get this done. It's nice to have students and teachers and principals, and thank you to Jamie Bell-Williams, who is walking out the door from Orange Middle School with her teacher and students, and to Mr. Johnson, who I saw here earlier, who was with his student from Orange High School. So we appreciate that. All right. I need a motion to adopt our agenda for tonight.
Madam Chair, I had sent a message requesting to pull the consent item six, new math curriculum recommendation.
On the math curriculum, okay. Okay. I need a motion to adopt with the understanding that we're going to pull the math curriculum and...
And in terms of, I mean, I'll defer to you, but I know for some things, we may have some guests who might want to discuss that a little bit later. I mean, we have like equity, where are we?
Yes.
So I don't know where we want to put it, but...
Okay. Is there a preference to where to put that? Dr. Jones, do you have any preference to that?
I think if we wanted to put it at the end...
Very end, be the best.
Of the work session, possibly. Or actually, it would need to be at the end of discussion action.
Okay, we'll just make the motion to adopt with the idea that we're moving the math curriculum for discussion at the very end of our meeting.
And that would make that 4B.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And public comments tonight?
No public comments tonight.
No public comments? So we need a motion to adopt our consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor? I mean, a second.
Second?
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It is passed. All right. Into our work session, we have our spring 2025 indoor air quality report tonight with Mr. McKee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, Superintendent. I'm Hank McKee, Director of Maintenance for Orange County Schools. Our district has maintained a longstanding commitment to providing a clean, safe, and healthy environment for all our students and staff. As part of that commitment, independent air quality testing has been conducted regularly since the early 2000s, each fall and spring, as well as on an as-needed basis for specific areas of concern. For the most recent spring testing cycle, Orange County Schools partnered with First Call Restoration. They worked in collaboration with the Solutions Group, a firm with 25 years of history in our school district. As of the fall, Dr. Curcio, the founder of the Solutions Group, began transitioning into retirement. In anticipation of this change, we engaged First Call Restoration to lead our indoor air quality assessments going forward. First Call already had an established relationship in our district through their work with water damage mitigation and restoration. To ensure the smooth transition and maintain expert oversight, they brought Dr. Curcio in to assist in analyzing the spring testing data. Together, they produced the comprehensive report based on their findings. Testing was conducted over spring break with the input from the school principals to identify areas of concerns. The process included visual inspections and baseline carbon monoxide measurements, and then additional CO2 readings were taken the week after spring break, once the school was full. We're not there yet. Testing, already there. This evening, you'll hear a summary of those findings. The team selected for this work is highly qualified and experienced in indoor air quality in public institutional settings. The report will inform you of the continued development in our preservation or preventative maintenance, excuse me, program with a specific focus on preserving the classroom learning environment. My staff has been working closely with them and school administration and custodial team to identify and address potential problems and areas before they become significant issues. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy for presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Jeremy. I'm from First Call Clean and Restoration, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about what we were testing, what we found, and then what recommendations we have. To start off, indoor air quality is testing is a process of measuring and analyzing the air in a building to identify the presence of harmful substances. IQ tests measure air for impurities such as allergens, mold, and others. These tests show whether the quality of your indoor air meets standards, and the goal is to ensure a clean and healthy and safe environment for all the building's occupants. So part of the IQ testing is testing for mold, and there's a wide range of species and types. Some are expected to be in indoor environments, and others are less ideal for indoor environments. The exact number and type can be ascertained through laboratory analyzed tests. The best type of testing for mold is air samples, and it is recommended that all visible mold be remediated, no matter the type. Another thing we test is CO2 or carbon dioxide, and carbon dioxide is a byproduct of the air we breathe. The ideal indoor levels are below 100, sorry, 1,000 parts per million, and levels over 1,000 parts per million can contribute to drowsiness, lethargy, and poor concentration. And ideal CO2 levels can be maintained through proper ventilation through the HVAC system. What we're looking for in our biannual inspections would be humidity and temperature, ensuring is proper for the school. So the humidity range ideally is between 40 and 60% relative humidity. Higher levels occur due to open windows, ineffective or underutilized HVAC systems, or leaks. And the normal temperature inside of a school should range between 68 to 76 degrees Fahrenheit. Another thing we look for in our inspections would be current or possible water damages. So I'm expecting for potential water damages, water intrusions, elevated humidity. Water damages can be detrimental to the indoor air quality. Water damage can be caused by leaks from plumbing or from exterior penetrations, condensation, or elevated humidity. Finding and fixing conditions conducive to water damage will limit damage, poorer air quality, and potentially more costly repairs or remediation. So the report rates the schools on a scale from poor to very good. Poor being inadequate air quality due to microbial growth, contamination, and environmental conditions outside of ideal ranges. Fair air quality affected or potentially affected by environmental conditions outside, oh, my apologies, outside of ideal ranges, and then good, adequate air quality and environmental conditions, and then very good, optimal or excellent air quality and environmental conditions. So in the next slide, we have, do you mind advancing to the next slide there? So we have a scale of where the schools are. No schools are in the poor category. Three are in fair, and of course, the rest of them are in the good and very good category. So for the schools that are in the fair category, there is a action plan specifically for them, one being investigation and inspection of the HVAC units, ensuring that there's proper humidity, temperature, and CO2 levels through proper maintenance and utilization of those HVAC systems, identifying sources and causes of the damaged ceiling tiles that were found, and replacing those, and then continuing to monitor the CO2 humidity readings to make sure that they're in optimal levels and to make sure that a fluke didn't elevate those levels, for instance, mopping the floor when we were doing our inspection. Overall, there is a service and maintenance recommendation for the school. One would be, of course, maintaining optimal air humidity levels. Elevated humidity can lead to mold growth and cause secondary damages from condensation. Another is regular vent and air return cleanings. Identifying and fixing potential exterior leaks and sources of water intrusion. Ensure proper ventilation to reduce CO2 levels inside, and identify sources and causes of damaged ceiling tiles and replace those ceiling tiles. So in summary, Orange County Schools exceeds the IQ testing standards. Most schools in our area aren't doing any sort of testing like this, and Orange County Schools have committed to preventive maintenance to avoid degradation of indoor air quality and more costly repairs. And some of those items include regular changes of air filters in HVAC systems, quarterly vent cleanings, cleaning the coils at least every two years, or more so when the need arises, every five years doing a full HVAC cleaning, and then having remediation plans for roof leaks and other weather-related issues when they're found. All right. And then we leave this open for questions from the board.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Moll?
Thank you very much. And yeah, and I appreciate you bringing back the Solstice Group to sort of lay out the report in a way that is like consistent with how they used to do it, which I think was really helpful. Of course. And it was, a lot of the notes in the report were very helpful to understand, so I appreciated how you compared like the levels of indoor mold measurement versus outdoor, and I appreciated the comparison of like CO2 and humidity and all of those things. I thought were really informative and helpful. I guess my question is an administrative one, so it must be, it's probably for Mr. McKee, but it's, how are we monitoring ongoing, you know, the register, the quarterly vent cleaning has been on like every report forever? And there are some schools that are looking much better now than they had in previous reports. So at one point, Orange High School had some serious issues, I think, and it didn't really in this report. But like, what's the, how's the administration monitoring and making sure these things are going to happen?
I'll tell you how the process is right now. It's quarterly by custodians, and then it's checked by principals, then it's sent to custodial foreman with a sign-off from the principal and the custodian. Then custodial foreman, Bobby, will go and do his, he does monthly checks at every school. So if he follows up right after he gets the report, he may make an extra note to check those items, to see that it was checked by him as well. With rotation, there's always going to be some that, while, like you said, Orange High School wasn't great at one point, now it's coming in as great, there's always going to be some of this having to retrain and reteach to make sure we're doing it efficiently. So...
I mean, some of those pictures were kind of, I was like, oh, I can, that's very visible that that is collecting a lot of dust, which you explained in the report, like, you know, then flows out and the kids are breathing it, and then everybody thinks there's like mold in the school, but actually, it's just like a bunch of dust.
And a lot of that is on the return side as well. So it's not going to blow out, but it'll pull in and then get caught by the filter. But still, it looks terrible, and it's not great for our environment. Another item that we've addressed in this month has been making sure high dusting is getting done better. The vents, like the ones in here, they may be getting skipped, and we're addressing that to, because Jeremy pointed out, a lot of the vents that were an issue were up high.
Are up high.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Mr. Housher?
Also, I want to say thank you for updating the report to make it much easier. My question's on Central. We just replaced that mechanical system, didn't we, like a year ago? And one of the advantages of that system was better exchange rate, and I noticed that it's saying we need to increase that. So are we tweaking it, or, I'm just trying to correlate...
For both Efland and Central, I'm talking with the engineer to get the settings right.
Okay, okay. Because I was hoping that's what you were going to say, is this is an easy fix versus, you know, hey, our mechanical won't allow it.
So with the data they brought with where we can see where they sit, because they took a lot of CO2 testings all throughout and then put it all together as an average for each school, I can see which areas need to be adjusted the most. And I'm working with both Snyder and the engineer to address what we need to do to keep the system running most efficiently, to keep the school comfortable, as well as bringing in outdoor air.
And definitely, since the new system's there, it's much easier. The other question I had is on Orange Middle. Orange Middle's been kind of a challenge, and I'm curious of, do we have a different approach? Because that's not a new, the new mechanical, but is there something we're looking at there?
Orange Middle does not have a great fresh air. We are going to talk with some engineers about that to bring in circulation there. The other thing is the mechanical closets there really didn't score well. This summer, we're going to do a deep clean of the mechanical closets and the HVAC coils, as well as ductwork. That's one of the ones that needs to get addressed this summer.
Okay, yeah, because I think that's one of the ones to focus on, since we do have some newer mechanical.
It's a high focus for us. The design there is, it doesn't have returns for the HVAC system. It pulls it through the doors on the mechanical closets, and that means cleaning in there, and so it's addressing and putting a new process in place in there.
Excellent. Do we have a target for a new mechanical in Orange Middle?
Not at Orange Middle.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Housher?
Yeah. I just, I want to thank Sarah and Will for asking some of the questions. It would really be nice for us to get, I think you're making progress, and the vents overall look better than they did in the last quarter, but the report repeats itself. So is it just possible for us to get a progress report that shows the progress that you're making? And I'm hearing from your answer to Will's question that the CO2 exchange is a mechanical adjustment. It is not a major fix. So I appreciated the simplification for the layperson's view on some of these things. On Orange Middle School, there was another set of issues around moisture, and I was curious how that, you know, what is that going to take?
That's another one, when we talk with fresh air, about adding fresh air in there, we'll talk about the possibility of dehumidification in some of those units that are set up to where controls can make some changes.
Okay, do we think, is it that simple? Because there's...
It may not be as simple, but that's what we're hoping right now, and we're looking into it, so.
So any timeline on when we might have an idea of...
I don't have one right now, but we can get you a timeline.
Thank you.
And we can get you a follow-up report as well. I'll talk with Mr. Davis about when the best time to come back and...
Looks like you're making progress. You should be showing off.
Ms. Dole?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation report. I have to say, the report is really nicely laid out. I like seeing the, like, the invoices, you know, the records interspersed with, the summaries are great, and I am happy to see a picture of weeds growing in a gutter and acknowledging that that's something that needs to be changed. I'm also taking notes. My classroom in a different district is way outside these OSHA EPA recommendations, and I might be sharing your presentation. But anyway, I think it's like really, I'm really pleased to see the consistency develop. And I was, you know, when I was looking at which schools were fair, I'm like, okay, those are some of our older schools, and, you know, we're talking about doing some work on those schools, and then I see Grady Brown is very good, and that's really impressive that, you know, all the proper maintenance and all that can make a difference even with an older school. So I found this very informative, and I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Oh, Ms. Padilla, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
Thank you for the presentation, and I remember when you guys did the first presentation, it was my first meeting seeing this since I've been sitting here, and that presentation created anxiety, I remember. So to see this, I just want to say is great. But I have one question, is you mentioned that sometimes the high vents get missed. I am wondering if you guys have like a spreadsheet that, is that how you communicate with others, how you're keeping up with the maintenance?
So some of it is spreadsheet-based. Ms. Dole mentioned the gutters. That is a scheduled item. New Hope's been getting a new roof for two years now, so it keeps getting bumped off for cleaning gutters, and that's how it got to that condition. But it is a spreadsheet and how we keep up with those items. Yeah.
Ms. Housher?
On some of the vents, is it, makes sense, I worry about the burden... we're placing on our custodians, and I'm curious if we need to contract any of it because it really is a high burden to.
So we do contract some of it. In fact, over spring break, we had first call doing the vents at Gravelly Hill. So in the gym specifically, up high. So we do contract some of it.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. It's a very concise report, it's very well put together. We like the format, so you can just keep that little template.
Good.
We'll see it again. And thank you both very much for what you do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Now we move into our Equity Task Roundtable Discussion. And I think Dr. Lanier is going to join us. I can get to that part. Not only do we have Dr. Lanier, we have a lot of other people joining us, so welcome to everyone tonight.
Let's try this again. Oh, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, here we go. So good evening. Let me make sure I am on the right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, and to our Strategic Instructional Leader and Visionary, Dr. Jones. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and speak as an equal collaborator and participant of the OCS Equity Task Force. It has truly been an honor and privilege to work alongside each and every one of the participants in this collaborative think tank. Before we begin our joint discussion, I would like to begin with reviewing Policy Code 1030, Equity in Education, while inviting you back into the collaborative space and understanding we established together on Saturday, May 3rd during your equity training led by Dr. Jess Wyler of Western Carolina's College of Education and Applied Professions. During our time, she pointed out several key terms and phrases within our policy: a barrier-free environment, recognizes the uniqueness allowing for differences, interruption of systems, structures, policies, and practices to ensure fairness, and reimagining. Dr. Wyler also encouraged us to use these three lenses when making decisions for our students and families. When these things are done consistently and are ingrained into the fabric of our culture, we will ensure access to high-quality, evidence-based teaching and learning opportunities for every single student, as well as a culture of belonging, by ensuring everyone feels valued, validated, and safe. Over the course of this year, members of the Equity Task Force and Equity and Student Achievement Department have come together six times to craft and rewrite priority four of the strategic plan. Before I present the current goals, year-over-year data, and proposed amendments, I would like to personally thank Kumar Sethi, Equity Facilitator, Dr. Jessica Dreher, Director of Student Engagement and Support Services, Sandra Blefko, Family Engagement Coordinator, and each member of the Equity Task Force that attended the meeting and provided guidance and input, specifically Spring Dawson McLaur, Kara Stewart, Gretchen Holquist, Danielle Price, and Julie Rutter. I would now like to open the dialogue with members of the task force and the board to discuss our collaborative process.
Does anyone here have questions that they would like to start off with? Or would they like to start with anything first? Any, any of the members of your committee like to start with anything first? We're, we're open to go either way. Okay?
Hi, I'm Gretchen Holquist. I'm a parent of two students at Cedar Ridge. We also had students last year at Standback, and my daughter is a Carolina friend, so I've had an, an opportunity to see a range of educational settings. I have had the privilege of serving on this task force for a little over a year. And what was exciting to me as a parent in this district was the conversations really centered on student achievement. And how do we make sure that all students, whether it's, you know, whatever situation that they're in, whatever needs that they have, how do we make sure the students can be successful overall and meet them where they're at? And that is a game changer for a lot of kids, right? I mean, we've all, we've all personally been in places where we feel like we didn't quite fit in, and you kind of lean back, and you, and being able to start to remove obstacles for students, whether it's because of a learning difference, whether it's because of a perceived difference that other students have, whether it's just they're, they're uncomfortable in a particular school because of whatever reason. All of the conversations really centered on how do we make sure that students are successful? And how do we make sure that we're giving the tools, the students, the teachers, the administration, the right tools to be able to remove barriers to students' learning? And so being able to have these conversations with this group and be invited in was tremendous. And I, I feel honored to be able to participate and support this.
Well, this board appreciates your participation in this and everyone's participation. And so we're, we're very happy to have you here tonight to talk about this. Ms. Price, do you, would you like to say something?
Sure, I would. My name is Danielle Price. I am the parent of an Orange Middle School 7th grader. I've had the privilege to serve on this task force, this is my second year. And I would just like to talk about the differences in the process. This was a very different process. We had a different leader this time, and I feel like we had a more organic process. We were invited to, to come in and get our feet wet. It wasn't what Dr. Lanier wanted, it wasn't what Mr. Sethi wanted, it wasn't what Dr. Dreher wanted. They were there to provide us with the data and the information, and we were really there to, to dig our, our feet and our heels in and say, hey, as a parent, this is what I see. Or as a parent, this is what I experience, or this is, these are the challenges my child has, or this is what I see happening at our school. I think that that was a really worthy and worthwhile process, and I so appreciate having the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Dawson McLaur? Good evening.
Thank you, good evening. I joined the Equity Task Force this winter, and I think maybe the most important thing I want to say is that after 10 years of being connected with this district, this was the first time that I've been around the table with folks from Central Office, talking about equity and how things really work, and the ways that y'all are supporting teachers and principals in meeting each of our children's needs. Learning more about how disciplined decision-making happens, how families are supported with attendance, really hearing y'all talk through your practice and your areas of expertise was instructive. I feel like I understand it better, and it was just a real honor to get more insight into the things that are going really well, the ways that y'all are working together collaboratively and strongly to create inclusive environments for all of our kids. And it was pretty exciting to be part of it, to be in conversation, to be in that shared Google Doc, to get to really think about it together and ask questions. So I appreciate the opportunity, I'm grateful for the way that y'all structured it, and it feels like a big deal to me that we're sitting around this space tonight and that there's the opportunity to be in collaboration. I've been in deep relationship with my children's teachers, with social workers, with principals and assistant principals, and the Central Office has always felt like a little bit mysterious and separate, and so this felt, felt pretty great and exciting. And I think especially in this time when there continue to be such incredible attacks on public education, on our teachers, and on our families and our communities, to feel like y'all were like really sincerely inviting us to the table, felt like a big deal and gave me hope. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Dreher, would you like to say anything?
So I have participated in Equity Task Force since arriving here, and each year it has been slightly different. I think the great thing about this time, kind of to Ms. Price's point about it being organic and actually working all together to, to do one thing. And for us, it was planning and getting parent voice and community voice in how we are making our plans, which should happen all the time, but does not happen all the time. So just glad that we were able to give them the opportunity to be able to give some voice to particularly something so official that we use to drive the work that we do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blefko, any words, wisdom from you?
I'm just agree with everything that everybody have said here. It was a special place where everybody felt welcome, and we not only express our experiences and, and, and talk about how our families are feeling, and, and seeing ways that how we can support our families and our staff and our students.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all wonderful to hear, and, and I'm glad that it's been a great experience for you all working on this, and we greatly appreciate what you're doing. Board members, any questions? Ms. Molly?
Thanks, yeah. I mean, I just want to react to what you all shared, and thank you for coming tonight and sharing your perspectives. It's really good to hear how open and curious, like that's kind of what I was hearing from you all, is like a level of openness and curiosity and like desire to really learn from parents, which I think is essential in order for us to solve some of our biggest problems as a district. As you were talking about this, I was thinking about some of our, of our other, like, sort of advisory groups, like the EC Parent Council, I'm probably getting the name wrong, and just like the opportunity there when we sit at the table with real openness and curiosity to really solve problems and really understand the dynamics of what's happening, like really understand the, the experience. So, yeah, just, it, it takes a commitment to participate in that. So thank you to staff for like setting that environment, and thank you all for, for showing up and sharing your thoughts.
Ms. Doyle?
Thanks, everyone, for, for being here, and thank you for all the, thank you for all the time you've put into this in an ongoing way. And I echo some of, of what Sarah said in terms of openness and curiosity. I, I noticed that you all were talking about, and it's also similar to what we talked about when we had our Equity Retreat as a board or a recent Equity Training, the focus on removing barriers to student learning, and I'm just wondering about some examples that maybe came up, and Ms. Dawson McLaur mentioned, a couple examples, and, and I'm thinking of one because we had like a, some recent meetings where we were highlighting the response to student vaping issues and some ways to be more collaborative and supportive, and that was like some really outside-the-box thing. But there's so many different types of obstacles, and so I'm curious, do you have some that you would like to share, things you've talked through, or some that still seem like thorny or intractable?
So I think one of the biggest obstacles that we talked about in learning lesson, I think for us, was around attendance and what chronically absent looks like. And having come here and sat at board meetings and listened to Dr. Dreher present, it doesn't really sink in until you're sitting and having like a two-way dialogue where she's giving the information, but I'm given an opportunity to ask a clarifying question. And when she puts it in layman's terms and says, you know, how many days was it, Dr. Dreher? 10%. So 10% of 180 is 18 days. So 18 days, but that accounts for suspensions, that accounts for whether or not they are at an athletic event, that accounts for whether or not I take my child out of school to attend a trip with me, or whatever that may be. And that really does present an obstacle for kids and success. And I think sometimes that may be something that, as a group, we don't all think about. And that's probably what I felt like was the most important thing that I learned. And it was probably one of the, one of the last things, but that's definitely something that, that was my aha moment that stuck with me.
Building on that, I also, I did not realize that suspensions contributed to absences. I don't know what I thought happened, if you, like, once you think about it. But when you start talking about, you've got a student who has enough challenges in that particular classroom that they're acting out, that you then pull them out, right? So chances are, things aren't going well in that class to begin with. Then you pull them out and take them out of a learning environment, and without creating a restoration loop to get them back and integrated into the classroom, you've now taken that child off track, and we've then put a barrier in place potentially to that child's success where we're trying to be removing them. So for me, the attendance and the relationship to suspensions and was a real surprise, and it was, it was a big aha for me as a parent.
I'll just add briefly, I really appreciated being able to back all the way up from attendance or chronic absenteeism and disciplinary incidents, to think about like, what is it that helps kids want to be at school? In what ways are our staff and teachers supporting children and feeling like they belong? In what ways are folks creating that safe, consistent environment and then stepping in to provide extra support when it's needed? And that goes to families too. Like, what does it look like to really be inviting families in, building relationships with families, helping reassure families that their kids are safe at school? It felt specific, and it also felt holistic.
Mr. Richmond, did you have some?
I'll just, I'll just throw in there too that I really appreciate all the work that you do. And we know that this type of work never ends, right? And so it takes everybody, not just the folks in the school, but it takes everybody in the community, different organizations, to be involved with this type of work. And I'll reiterate what Sarah said earlier too, it, it definitely takes work in, in building relationships with the families, because those parents know what their children need, and so we definitely have to go to those parents and say, hey, what can we do to help your child? Right? And so I just, I just want to say thank you for that work, but I think we also, we got to try to chip in to those other organizations, all those community members, everybody being involved to make sure these children succeed. So that's, that's my piece.
I would like to reiterate exactly what he said too about relationships. As a former principal, if you don't build the relationships in the school, you're, you're in trouble. And it starts day one, when everybody walks in the building, getting to know each other, teachers, students, everybody, and, and especially the parents. The parents have got to see that you're willing to build those relationships and, and willing to be able to help their child. And it really, it makes, the relationship piece makes all the difference in the world. Mr. Asher, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Okay. So thank you all for taking your time to look at this and give your feedback and support to the school system. We know you have lives and your own kids and your own activities, but it's the dedication and focus on this that helps us improve our schools, improve the students' experience, and also helps us learn from the collective of everyone. One thing that I'd like to say is OSNAAC that Sarah was thinking of, which is the Orange Special Needs Advisory Council, I definitely recommend as it's kicking off to have some joint meeting at some point, because barriers come in all different shapes, sizes, and challenges. And, you know, I think people are tired of hearing me say this, but I think when we think about how kids can participate, that's different. One of the things I think of is going to one of the elementary schools at a choral concert where an EC child was allowed to participate with lights instead of music. And that made all the difference, not just to the family, but that student. And I think as we think of different ways that kids can participate as well. And I think as we think of different ways that kids can participate as well, I think that's a better outcome for all of us because just saying, oh, they, this child can't do this or this child can't do that, there's other ways they can participate. And I just applaud you all for digging in that information and trying to think of new ways to help. One of the questions I had beyond the snack was, you know, one of the things that prior the Equity Committee did was meet with the student organizations. And I'm curious because that was an avenue too, to get some different perspective beyond the parents' perspectives of what they are seeing, but what the students' thoughts are. Is that, is that planned to do or have y'all done that engagement with some of the student organizations?
So that is upcoming work, but our focus this year was specifically on the rewrite for Priority Four.
Fantastic. Thank you all.
Ms. Hauser?
I just want to add my thanks and I love hearing the enthusiasm around directing this work toward improving outcomes for our, for every student group. So thank you for that and thank you for, for that. I'm, I'm curious about, and I like that you're working with data, that really make, that really makes me happy. So thank you for that work and I know some of you and I know the work, the quality of the work, I can't imagine, I would love to have sat in on some of the conversations, I'm sure they were fantastic. So just a couple of questions. First, this topic of obstacles or barrier-free education. And to Andre's point, that sometimes the barriers are, come, right? It could be a family that doesn't speak Engli, doesn't speak English, or a family that doesn't have computer access, or a family that doesn't feel comfortable advocating for their children. So, and that's just one, one set of examples, but do, do you, so maybe it's a question about the future and is this something that the task force might help us look at in the future? Because we have these, we have these ideas of what we want, but we don't, we don't unpack it and dig down into saying, what's stopping us from getting it? What do we have to do differently to make that happen, to make these families engage more? So I'm curious if the task force is doing that and if that's a role, a continued role for you, or if not, what is the continued role that you see?
So I think some of your questions or some of the responses, I guess, that I would give to your question will be answered when we go over our Priority Four presentation. So I don't want to necessarily, you know, spoil the surprise, I guess I would say.
So how about if I ask it differently? What, what do you, what's next? What's next for you all?
Like I want to say, I'll keep you guessing. No, I mean, obviously, of course, you know, we definitely wanted to make sure that we got through this process, but you know, we have, you know, a part two and work that we're going to be doing within our, you know, department in terms of what we're going to try to do to take things to the next level. I will be, you know, very transparent to say, you know, of course, I mean, I'm about to finish my first year in this role and so having to figure that out along with figuring this out, you know, we've, we've, we've learned a lot and we know some places where we need to improve. And so from that perspective, we will then be bringing the task force along that ride and, you know, when we continue to start moving some of these initiatives forward, specifically around these action steps with our Priority Four.
Okay. And just one other question. In the next presentation, you talk about consistency of application. It's a new, new term that we're, that I don't remember seeing it before. It's a beautiful language and I was just curious if this came out of you all because it's really a big deal. It's a consistent.
So all of the, all of the goals and the action steps were, as one of our members stated earlier, was put into a Google Doc. Everyone had free reign and access to be able to edit, add comments. Mr. Sathy and I and also Dr. Dreher would sit and go through and review all of the comments that were made and then make revisions and then we would send that out again. When we would meet, we would, you know, sit down and have discussion and that continued up to a point where we had to stop actually collecting certain pieces of data and eventually get to a point where we were making some decisions around, so this is what we want to, you know, this is what we want to present and what we want to propose and the direction that we want to move forward. So there was, again, equal voice that was, that was shared within the creation of the priority and the goals and the action steps. Anyone else can also answer some questions if you would like to?
Ms. Bedea?
Thank you. I've been raising my hand for a while.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I, I just want to thank everyone for your work in the Equity Task Force. I notice and I hear you that you have built community within yourselves and that's great. And I'm hopeful that you will bring that learning into the community so everyone understands the absenteeism that we don't really discuss much. Thank you.
I'll add as well, this was my first time actually being involved in a strategic planning process, like rewriting a goal, because I'm just a few years out of the classroom. And that process was, was a bit of a mystery to me in terms of how, how we got these goals and like what feedback went into it and what community feedback kind of drove some of those goals. And as, over the past few years, as I've looked at some of those goals and tried to correlate it with the data that we provide for you during board meetings, it has raised some questions in my mind of, well, where did that percent come from as a goal? And, and what does that actually mean? And did someone look at how many students that would result in a change? And like, is that even a viable goal? So a big part of what we were doing here that was particularly empowering and transparent was drilling down to that data, explaining it to folks on the task force and taking those questions, like, okay, here's why we said 3% and not, you know, 4% and here's how many students that involves and here's what that looks like for attendance and here's what chronic attendance is. And, and that format not being a presentation format, not being a everyone sit and listen to us talk for a while, but we're sitting around and ask questions. That, that was particularly powerful and it helped guide us in the process where we were furiously taking notes, okay, let's go back and revisit this because they raised some concerns that we didn't think about. There were some things that Dr. Lanier and I wrote in the original first drafts of the rewrite of Priority Four that, to be honest, the Equity Task Force pushed back on us. The, the community members and family members, parents pushed back and said, actually, we want it to be a little bit stronger than that. And so we, we took the feedback and, and did what we could with that. But that's, that, that process, I feel, thanks to Dr. Lanier's leadership, was, it was a model for, for how we can deeply, meaningfully involve community engagement and doing something as impactful and as important as strategic planning.
It sounds like it was a true learning experience for both parties coming together and that's, that's what we want. And so I applaud you all for that. Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, just one other comment is, you know, somebody you mentioned you've been on the task force before. I, I just want to, you know, talk about some of the great work that's happened in the past. For example, you know, we've talked about barriers and what kids want or need to come to school. And I think one of the real important ones that came out of there is having a trusted adult that the student can go to. And that's one of our key questions that we survey our students on to find out and make sure that they have somebody they can talk to, especially whether it's at home, they have a concern, whether it's at school, another student, that they have someone to talk to because if they don't, that's when we run into issues and they run into frustrations. And that definitely was an outcome of the Equity Task Force and their guidance on things we should be looking at. So I just wanted to highlight that, you know, there are things that we've put in place because of these discussions and I just wanted to thank y'all again as well for taking your time and energy to have these open conversations. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Dr. Lanier, are you going to go through the Goal Four? Is that what we're, I'm the Priority Four, not Goal Four, Priority Four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I thought you were. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. Yes, thank you again for all your hard work.
So I'll go ahead and get started while the presentation is voting. So good evening again, members of the board, Dr. Jones, community stakeholders and fellow cabinet members. And happy birthday to Mr. Davis, because it is his birthday today.
Orange County Schools. Happy birthday.
Not until my priority is done. Orange County Schools is guided by a clear mission and vision that reflects its commitment to students, families and the community at large. It is these statements that provide the groundwork and lay the foundation for every decision, strategy and initiative within the district. This evening, our focus is Priority Four, Empower and Culture. Priority Four is a cornerstone of our commitment to inspire, engage and challenge all of our students. Research shows that when there is a true collaboration between schools, communities and families, student outcomes are positively impacted and these values are reflected in the proposed goals and action steps. The goal areas under Priority Four are designed to ensure that Orange County Schools, families and communities work together to ensure student achievement and equitable outcomes such that all of our students graduate with options. Throughout this presentation, you will hear from Goal Team Leads, Dr. Jessica Dreher, Director of Student Engagement and Support Services, Kumar Sathy, OCS District Equity Facilitator, Daniel Kearns Pickett, Mental Health Coordinator, and Kevin Smith, Chief Public Information Officer. I would like to recognize and thank again the members of the Equity Task Force for their expertise and collaboration throughout the Priority Four rewrite process. I would also like to thank Ms. Kimberly DeGraffin-Reed for her work on making our Family Academy series this year a huge success. The plan sets out three targets outlined in Goal One, Goal Two and Goal Three, along with multiple research-based strategies that will be implemented to achieve each goal. Please know that these proposed goals and action steps come from robust discussion around the work and its objectives. After this brief and brisk presentation, we will be happy to take questions. We will start with our core beliefs. As stewards of OCS, we do believe that students deserve consistency in use, interpretation and application of OCS policies outlined in the Code of Student Conduct. Students are more likely to uphold expectations when there is consistency in the application of policy among school staff. Parents and caregivers are essential in our continued efforts to support desirable school behavior and school administration should use equitable supportive measures, opportunities and strategies and interventions for students to solve problems and correct behaviors. I also want to again point out, members of the Equity and Student Achievement Department and Equity Task Force use these three lenses when considering how to make revisions to Priority Four. An equity lens when considering what each of our students would need to be successful. A data lens when considering what the evidence says about what students would need. And a community lens when considering taking into consideration all of the knowledge that students, families and stakeholders bring to the table to assist in decision-making. Let's begin by reviewing our current Goal One, as it is currently written in Priority One of the strategic plan. The goal targeted reducing the suspension rate of Black and multiracial students to 3% by 2026. There are three action steps that accompany this goal. We will now review the data as it relates to Goal One, beginning with office referrals. We will review this data and as you can see on Slide Nine, the number of individual students receiving an office referral has decreased in every subgroup. Slide 10 indicates the top three grade level, excuse me, the top three grade levels, policy violations and number of referrals per location. Slide 10 also shows that the classroom is where these policy violations are occurring the most. A review of our in-school suspension data shows that there has been an increase in the number of students experiencing in-school suspension as a result of policy violations. However, when we look at our out-of-school suspension data, we see that all but two of our subgroups have experienced a decrease. This is similar to our rate of suspensions and the number of students repeatedly experiencing out-of-school suspension. So in summary of the data, so in the summary of the data, there was an increase in the number of students experiencing in-school suspension in every subgroup except Asian, Indigenous and females. However, there was a decrease in the number of students experiencing one out-of-school suspension while Hispanic students increased by three and Indigenous students increased by one. The only subgroups that experienced an increase in their rate of out-of-school suspensions were multiracial and Indigenous students, but it is important to note that the Indigenous column represents one incident out of 18 total enrolled students. There were no incidents of out-of-school suspension by Indigenous students in the 2023-2024 school year. And there was a slight increase of four male students and one Hispanic student experiencing two or more incidents of out-of-school suspension. There was no change with our Asian students and every other subgroup experienced a slight decline. As a result of this data, we are proposing the following amendment to Goal One. By June 2026, Orange County Schools will decrease the overall number of out-of-school suspensions in all subgroups by 10% annually. There are several action steps that I will briefly review, so monitor and perfect the professional learning community's planning process to ensure the development and implementation of our robust rigorous instructional framework such that daily lessons and unit plans of instruction are representative of all students. These two action steps that are here on this slide, I do want to make sure that I point out, link us back to Priority One when that review was actually given earlier this year. Provide ongoing professional learning to principals, assistant principals and educators on the interpretation of the use of the Code of Student Conduct or policy and the distinction between minor and major office referrals. And also adopt an objective criteria for office referrals to reduce the risk of bias leading to the, excuse me, the disproportionality, excuse me, of punitive consequences for student behavior. You can also see in this next slide, again, district staff and administration will also collectively analyze discipline data using Educator Handbook. You can see the various ways in which that data will actually be desegregated. Our last two action steps under Goal One, district and school-based administration will review data monthly, of course, to examine disproportionate discipline practices and also provide an institutionalized restorative practices training district-wide and school-wide. So based upon that, that goal and those action steps, I am now going to turn the presentation over to Team Lead for Goal Two, Dr. Jessica Dreher. And Dr. Dreher, I will drive this, I will drive the slides for you.
Thank you. I was wondering who was driving. So looking at Goal Two of Priority Four, just a reminder of the current Goal Two of increasing the average daily attendance rate of each and every student from 89 to 95% or greater by 2026. And the strategies for those three there of increasing the daily attendance for the three lowest performing elementary schools, two lowest performing middle schools and one lowest performing high school, increasing the daily attendance rate for Black and multiracial students, and then also increasing the percentage of students who feel engaged in school as seen through the Panorama Survey, up to 90% or greater. So as we look at our average daily attendance rate, and we have split this up into elementary, middle and high for you to view, you'll see here for elementary schools, there have been 1% decrease in change, no change at two of our elementary schools, all of them averaging right around the low to mid 90s. For our middle schools, you'll see a decrease of 1% for two schools and no change for Orange Middle, again, within that low 90s average. And then for our high schools, a decrease, no change, and then a 2% increase at Partnership Academy. As we are looking at chronic absenteeism and what that means, again, as we've explained, a student is chronically absent when you've missed at least 10% of the total number of days that you've been enrolled in school. So just for an example of what that looks like, if you are in school for 20 days, then two of those days, if you've missed two of those days, then you are chronically absent. And when we're looking at what those absences are, it is not unexcused versus excused. It is suspensions, it is excused, it is traveling, it is I'm sick. Any, all attendance is considered when we're looking at chronic absence. And again, that 10% number. So through an entire school year, if we're looking at a 185-day school year, 18 of those days, if you miss 18 or more of those days, then you are considered chronically absent. And so why that's important is we're looking at how to, thank you, how to remove those barriers and how to increase attendance in school, how to reduce chronic absenteeism and through educating the importance of attending school. So as we're looking at the chronic absenteeism rate, again, this is the percentage of students that are considered chronically absent, again, based off of missing that. chronically absent, again, based off of missing that 10% rate. So looking across the board at our demographics, there have been decreases year over year, and one of our groups actually did see an increase in that percentage. And so what we want to begin to look at is what are those ways, again, that we can provide awareness, but also resources and tools in an effort to continue to decrease that number, because that's what we are looking to do. Next, we'll move over to our Panorama data. As a reminder for that as well, in the past, we did look at Panorama through grades three through 12, but with recent changes in law, we did change that, removed grade three, and so we are doing that survey from grades four, four through 12. So the survey, the elementary survey is done for grades four and five, and then the secondary survey is done in grades six through 12. Also, what we did as a change this school year was we did remove some questions, and we changed our notification back to an opt-out model, so that way, when we are sending those notifications to parents, they are required to opt out if they do not want their students to participate in the survey. The next couple of slides are just some sample questions from the survey in the areas, the topic areas of discussion, so supportive relationships, self-management, positive feelings, and social awareness. Are those topics within the elementary survey? What you'll see is a comparison between fall 2024 and spring 2025. The first slide is for fall 2024. And again, if you recall, what we like to look at as a measurement is above or below 50%. So if you're below 50%, that's an area of concern. Looking at the fall, we did not have any of our groups under 50%. Also, looking at spring 2025, the same, we did have a slight decrease in some of those areas, specifically supportive relationships by 1%. But still looking good where we did not have any areas of concern where we had any under 50%. And again, that percentage is based off of response rate. Just a summary of the data for our grades four and five survey. We had an increase in the number of students who participated between the fall and the spring. In our categories in social awareness, there was no change. There was a decrease in positive feelings and supportive relationships. And then we are, there, we saw an increase in the category of self-management. Moving on to our secondary survey for grades six through 12, again, you'll see sample questions. And for our secondary survey, they do have a few more categories that they answer questions in. So you'll see school climate, supportive relationships, sense of belonging, teacher-student relationships, self-management, cultural awareness and action, diversity and inclusion, and social awareness, positive feelings, and then finally, social perspective-taking. So these next two slides are of the first five topics. First, you'll see the fall 2024. Again, we're seeing all high response rates, none under 50%. For the spring 2025, for those same categories, the same, there was a slight decrease in those as well, but we are all above 50%. For the remaining categories in the fall of 2024, there was one area in social perspective-taking that was below 50%, which is an area of concern, as well as one group within positive feelings. As a reminder, social perspective-taking is the extent to which students consider the perspectives of their teachers. So they might look at, do they consider how their information that their teachers are sharing with them, if they are knowledgeable, if they care about them, things of that nature. And then you'll see in the, for the spring of 2025 survey, in the same area, it did also decrease. So that is an area of concern for us to take a look at as we are planning for next school year. Some summarization of the data for spring 2025 in the secondary survey, we also had an increase from fall to spring in those areas of our students who participated. And then we saw a decrease in sense of belonging, teacher-student relationship, and social awareness, as well as school climate, cultural awareness and action, diversity and inclusion, and positive feelings. We were able to see an increase in supportive relationships. So I think Mr. Efton said it earlier about students having someone that they can talk to, whether it is a peer, an adult outside of school, or an adult in school. We are seeing an increase in students believing that they have those supportive relationships. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Kearns Pickett to give us some updates on school-based mental health.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Daniel Kearns Pickett. I'm the Mental Health Coordinator here for Orange County Schools. I will first want to start by thanking Dr. Dreher for speaking on my behalf during the previous board meeting in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, and for highlighting all the ongoing initiatives to prioritize mental health and wellness throughout our district. So this evening, I'm going to be presenting the school-based mental health data for the current school year. This academic year, we expanded our mental health support infrastructures by partnering with four in-person mental health agencies and maintaining one virtual therapy option. This is significant increase from the previous year, during which we partnered with one in-person agency and one virtual provider, and it marks notable progress from earlier years when the district utilized only one in-person agency. In order to better meet student needs and reduce the number of students on waitlist, we have implemented a feeder-pattern model. So mental health agencies are now assigned to specific schools based on feeder-patterns, helping to ensure continuation of care as students transition from elementary to middle school and from middle school to high school. So looking at this slide, you'll see that Gaggle Therapy is our virtual option. This is available to all students and all staff at no cost to them, regardless of insurance coverage. And then we have Piedmont Health. So this, this agency currently serves Eflin Cheeks Elementary with a full-time onsite therapist who has received positive feedback from both staff and families. We are currently in discussion to expand this partnership to include two additional schools for the 25-26 school year. Next, you'll see Renaissance Wellness. They provide services at Grady Brown, New Hope, AL Standback, and Cedar Ridge, followed by Upward Change, currently serves Eflin Cheeks, Hillsborough, River Park, and Gravely Hill. Important to note that due to clinician staffing and staffing challenges, Upward Change has decided not to continue its partnership next year, but we are currently and actively working to identify a replacement agency. And then lastly up there, we'll see Youth Extensions, who serve Central, Pathways, Orange Middle, and Orange High School. Alright, and our numbers. So Gaggle Therapy, this year, as of May 6, 2025, received 36 referrals, 36 students seen, zero students on the waitlist. Piedmont Health, 37 referrals, seen 37 students and zero on the waitlist. Renaissance Wellness, they received 52 referrals, 38 students were seen, and four students were on the waitlist. Important to note that those four referrals were made three to five days prior to me collecting this data, so those numbers have decreased since then. Upward Change, 27 referrals were made, nine students seen, and as I mentioned previously, they had various staffing concerns this year, so will not be renewing with us next year. And then lastly, Youth Extensions, 41 referrals made this year, 15 students seen, and zero students on the waitlist. So our total numbers are 193 total, school-based mental health referrals, 135 students seen, and seven students currently on the waitlist as of May 6, 2025. It's important to note that the disparities between the number of referrals and students seen are often due to insurance limitations or the need to refer that student to a higher level of care. So to address this, Gaggle remains a critical resource by offering therapy services to all students regardless of insurance eligibility. It is our standing expectation that schools and agencies utilize Gaggle when a referred student insurance is incompatible or when agency-specific waitlists exist. And so looking at all this data and these numbers, and reflecting on our progress, Orange County Schools has made measurable strides in improving access to school-based mental health services. This year, the number of students on the waitlist decreased from 16 last year to just seven this year. And by implementing a feeder-and-pattern approach and expanding access through Gaggle, which saw 36 students this year with no waitlist, we've been able to reduce service gaps and improve continuity of care. While challenges remain, particularly around insurance limitations and provider staffing, we are proud of the progress made and remain committed to building on this momentum to ensure that all students have equitable access to mental health support that they need throughout Orange County Schools.
Thank you. So with all of that information, looking at Goal Two, wanting to revise the current goal for Goal Two being by June 2026, Orange County Schools will address attendance by reducing the district chronic absenteeism rate from 21.83% to 19% as a way to improve student readiness, engagement, and academic outcomes by resolving a significant barrier to student learning. Strategies under this new goal include building the capacity of families by providing annual training regarding attendance and the impact on student achievement, monitoring the effectiveness of wraparound services, interventions, and programming through continued examination of monthly school discipline data and quarterly district discipline data, systematically tracking and analyzing data while utilizing a three-tiered system of support to provide differentiated strategies for students to improve attendance at all levels, and OCS students will participate in the annual Panorama Survey with a minimum completion rate of 95% or higher. And the final two, district and school-based administration will analyze student climate survey data and will facilitate reflective and critical conversations about the ways in which school processes, procedures, policies, adult actions, and adult interactions with students may contribute to disparities, and finally, expanding the number of questions in the sense of belonging section of the Panorama Survey to be able to get a clear understanding of the student perspective on identifying their school community as a good place to attend and learn, and that they feel like they belong. Currently in that section of the Panorama Survey, there's only one question, and what we want to do is expand that so that we're able to get a bigger idea of the range of their sense of belonging. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dreher. So moving right along, Goal Three. So Goal Three currently states, increase family partnerships and engagement among Black families from 18% to 40%, and 11% to 40% for Latino families by 2026. There are three action steps that accompany this goal as shown on Slide 56. We will start with, with, excuse me, we will start with campus parent portal. The next two slides will show the number of Black and Latinx families that have an account. Next, we will discuss our family engagement. As we began the 2024-2025 school year, the Equity and Student Engagement Team led by Kimberly DeGraffin-Reed utilized the results of the family engagement survey to inform our year-long offerings. Mr. Graffin-Reed made it her mission to ensure that OCS Family Academy consistently supported families by providing meaningful family engagement training on how to best support students and activities to support their child's learning. She also pointed to the research that shows that more families are engaged in the school environment, the more likely students are to excel academically. So this particular slide shows the month, the name of the session, and the total number of families that attended each month. So as a result of this data, we are proposing the following amendment to Goal Three. So by June of 2026, Orange County Schools will implement and maintain ongoing effective and meaningful engagement methods to strengthen communication and relationships between schools, families, and the community. Slide 64 begins to outline the action steps. So I want to start talking about community partnerships. So we know that meaningful partnerships provide crucial and critical support, opportunities, and resources. Orange County Schools defines a community partner as an organization whose goals align with the OCS strategic plan to meet academic, college, and career readiness, health and wellness, and social-emotional needs of all of our students. The partnership should serve as a relationship that increases student academic growth and development. Our goal is to ensure entities interested in partnering with us complete the new community partnership application process, which will launch in June for the upcoming school year, and include identifying the nature of the proposed partnership. Once vetted and if approved, partners will be onboarded with an overview of the academic and social-emotional goals of the strategic plan such that partners are clear-eyed on the direction of the district. Members of the family engagement, sorry, let me go back. Sorry. Members of the family engagement team are dedicated, so we're now going into the, to action step number two, are dedicated to fostering strong partnerships among families, students, and staff by ensuring clear and inclusive communication. To best meet the diverse needs of our community, team members prioritize multilingual communication across a variety of platforms and formats. This year alone, our team has fulfilled over 1,000 staff requests for interpretation and translation services. To further support language access, team members have developed a comprehensive language proficiency assessment designed to evaluate the English and Spanish skills of bilingual staff. This assessment measures proficiency in four key areas: speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Its primary purpose is to determine whether staff members meet the standards necessary to provide accurate and effective interpretation and/or translation services in their school communities. By identifying qualified bilingual staff, OCS aims to both improve the availability and raise the quality of language access service across the district. Through this comprehensive approach, we are working to strengthen communication and deepen engagement with our multilingual families. Mr. Smith will now discuss the final action steps of Goal Three. I will then close out the presentation and briefly take questions before requesting approval of the proposed goals and action steps. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Lanier, and thank you, Board, and Dr. Jones, and everyone here. We, you've heard a lot about what we're thinking. You've heard a lot from members of our community and parents and staff, and we're pleased to share with you a snapshot of the work that's ongoing to consistently shore up the commitment that you've heard about to authentic two-way communication. I want to highlight the creation of something called the School Champion Program, which is a network of highly-involved parents that we are committed to nurturing as an extension and reinforcement of ongoing district engagement strategies. Simply, the network supports our aims of meaningful two-way communication and will serve as an in-house focus group to provide Orange County Schools with feedback regarding the clarity and effectiveness of our messaging. Messaging sometimes gets confused with what we want to say, but as we heard tonight, it's what specific people need to hear consistent with our values so that they can act and benefit from our shared efforts. Simply put, in marketing and promotion, we always talk to people about what's in it for me. You and I, and all of us walk through space, and we are looking for things that will help make sure that we can reach our goals. And we've talked about our students having better outcomes, and families are here to support that. So through ongoing engagement, we aim to help them find their answer and tell their story here in our schools and along the many pathways available for them to find success. So families who are accepted and will commit to participating will serve as champions. They'll advocate both to and for our schools, programs, and school staff. OCS will be looking for parents, guardians, adult family members of enrolled students interested in volunteering to engage with current and prospective families about the benefits of being in our schools, the strength of our instructional programs, our phenomenal schools, teachers, and principals, and how receiving that rigorous and robust education offered by Orange County Schools will set their student on a trajectory to conquer a rapidly changing world. This will also provide the opportunity for families to build relationships among themselves with fellow champions from neighboring schools and receive information that will help students be successful at all times. Through active listening and engagement with these champions, we look forward to both aspects of their work, bringing schools around a common table and carrying that message back to their communities. Finally, we want to highlight our newly constructed website, and this, again, involves not just the work of one person or one team. I want to lift up the work of Jayla Davis and Gloria Moody, our Communication Specialist and Administrative Assistant, but also collaborative efforts across the district. When this launched in the fall of 2024, it was designed to serve as a digital gateway into our schools, every one of them, and Orange County Schools as a whole, the vision of our district and of each of our schools. This will support Priority Four by sparking dialogue about the schools themselves and the successes that students and educators enjoy in this work and sharing that with the greater community. And I think you see some examples of that if you just pull up our homepage at any point, any day. So this portal of always-evolving content was and is a collaborative effort, including school staff, central services, and now more and more our school community as they contribute content about students and teachers, as you, again, as you've seen and will continue to hear about. So anyone who's looking for what Orange County Schools has to offer will be able to look to us here. And again, thanks to the collaborative efforts of many here around the table tonight, this website was in This website was intentionally constructed not just to be a content management system, but also models the strategic approach and commitment to reaching every student, every family, everyone in our community, and the widest possible segment with the best possible information. Social media does represent a known method for building engagement, and we are active there, but you've seen a website-first, social media-second strategy that will continue to inform the way we engage with families, engage with schools, and engage with our community. Simply put, we want to own and manage that content directly, and that helps us when we go to engage consistently, faithfully, and authentically with members of our community. And lastly, of course, but far from least, our website includes an enhanced translation feature so that all our families can access the content in Spanish, English, and almost any world language, free of any barriers. So with that, Dr. Lanier, thanks for letting us showcase some of that work.
Absolutely, and I would be remiss if I did not point out two other action steps as well that our Public Information Office will be implementing in the twenty-five-twenty-six school year, so definitely providing ongoing training for our school and district staff on meaningful family and community engagement, because we definitely want to make sure that our families do feel welcome as soon as they come into all of our doors, as well as strengthening our district customer service at all touchpoints and establish clear ways to measure effectiveness and inform improvement. So if we're not doing well with our customer service, we certainly want to know, and we definitely want to be able to improve based upon that feedback and data that we would receive from our families. So as a result of those action steps, we are now at the point of the presentation where we have our current goals and then we now have our proposed goal amendments, and so we will turn it over to all of you for any questions that you have before we --
Questions, Ajay?
Thank you very much for this presentation. It's very informative, very helpful, and a very good plan based on everything that I'm seeing. Board, do you have questions or comments before we vote? Ms. Padilla?
Thank you for the presentation.
I do have a couple of questions. It was noted that Black students, it's ten percent higher in the past for school suspensions. Can you give me an example of the school suspensions, and do we have a plan to make sure this gets addressed? That's one. On Slide number twenty-two, I would suggest that we removed from using repeat offenders. We are talking about students, not criminals. I don't like that word. It says repeat offender students, so it is Slide twenty-two. It says students, including those with repeated offenses. So we can just remove ourselves from using that word. And to -- okay. And one of the questions that I had on communication, I have many, but I just, I'll keep it small. You're saying that reaching out the Hispanic community, and on Slide fifty-nine, it shows that the Hispanic community is not really signing up to get -- let me go back. On the parent portal, so if they're not doing that, how are we going to communicate with the families if they're not even signing up to the parent portal? How are we going to communicate with them and engage with them?
So thank you for your questions, and so we will definitely make a note in Slide twenty-two to remove the language from that particular action step. Starting at Slide fifty-nine in terms of parent portal, so recognize that what we were integrating from Power School to Infinite Campus, these were the actual numbers that we had received based upon that. We do have those numbers by school, and so at that point, we will be, of course, we will be sharing that information or going back and reviewing that information with school administration for them to be able to put in action steps, to be able to get their numbers up. This is not the only way, though, that we can communicate with our families. This is just one of the ways in which students would be able to receive information, which is one of the reasons why we were trying to implement other action steps aside from trying to get these numbers up. We're not saying that it is not important. We do know that it is important, but there are other ways that we're trying to communicate with our families, not just through parent portal. You had one more question, Ms. Padilla?
Yes. Students, Black students, if you can provide me an example. The question is, can you provide me an example of what is a suspension since their number is pretty high? It's alarming how high it is.
So are you --
What is a out-of-school suspension? What qualifies for -- An out-of-school suspension? Yes, like behavior-wise, what qualifies?
So recognize that the decision to suspend a child regardless of what race or what gender, the decision to suspend a child is a school-based decision, and that is either from the assistant principals or the principals who are actually handling that. That could be something as simple, that could be something as bullying and harassment, that could be a threat, so that could be serious disruptive behavior, which could be defined or is defined and spelled out within board policy. So again, it depends on the incident, the situation, the investigation that occurs by the school-based administration and the data that comes out of that. Based upon that, administration typically looks at the code of student conduct and looks at potential policies that have been violated, and that determines what the suspension would be, or if they're going to suspend or not suspend, depending on whatever it is that they find within the data.
Ms. Smiley, did you have your hand up?
I was going to give my hand, but I do have it.
Okay. I thought you had your -- I know Mr. Doyle does.
Okay, so first of all, I really like all of these revisions, so I really appreciate -- it sounds like the Equity Task Force participated in that as well. I really appreciate all of these revisions to language. A couple of things, just on the parent portal thing, we just have to figure out how to get everybody connected to that and how to help them understand, like, why would I use this? I was thinking about the connection between attendance and to this issue of, like, oh, it's only like two days a month or whatever that you have to miss to be chronically absent. Like, as an elementary school parent, I had very little idea sort of how my children were doing in school. I didn't get regular updates really on how they were doing in school, besides the report card, which is kind of one, two, three, four, you know? And then, so now I can tell from middle and high school because I have the parent portal, right? And I'm getting these grade updates, but if particularly Black and Hispanic parents don't have that portal access, like, they don't have that information. So I think there's like a connection there. And then another thing on Goal Three, I do, I'm just recognizing it's not measurable right now, the goal. It doesn't have like a measurable -- I would love for us, I'm not, I'm going to vote for it, but I would love for us to figure out how we can measure the effectiveness of all these strategies we're doing, like how we can measure the reach and how we can measure how effective our family engagement is. Like, I know Panorama has a family survey, I think, like, I don't know if it's any good. I've never seen it. You know, I don't know what it is, but like, are we getting to parents? How do they feel about this? You know, the Teacher Working Conditions Survey asks teachers a question that's like, my school does a good job of engaging families, and I'm like, you should ask the family, you know what I mean? Because all the schools are really high on that one, you know? But I just think there's opportunity to be there to figure out how we're measuring the actual success of what we're trying to do here. But I love all the strategies, and I have a little bit more up in the other categories, but I'll pass it around and maybe we can come back.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Thank you for this detailed --
Thank you for this detailed presentation, and I know it's a lot of work to identify all these specifics. I do like the goal of the more specific language around office referrals. I know that that kind of clouds data and trying to interpret data when there can be so much varying there. I was noticing that the chronic absenteeism rate decreased in every racial/ethnic group except American Indian, which is a very small group, even as the Panorama data wasn't showing overall an increased sense of belonging. So I was curious what the ideas were for how that happened. Can I just throw out a couple of questions? Okay, and then I was noticing, I hadn't remembered that Piedmont Health was specific to F1 Cheeks, which is fantastic, assuming they have some special dollars they get to use there, and it seems like there's a real need because they have the thirty-seven referrals, which is, I don't know, roughly a fifth of all the referrals, and that's, you know, one-thirteenth of our -- you know, so there's a lot of representation there needing those referrals. I don't remember the history around that. I was curious if we do parent logging into parent portal promotions, that laptop distribution, and is my understanding that, so the goal is going to be this asymptotic experience of every year we're cutting our suspensions by ten percent? Is that the goal? Ten percent annually?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Howes?
Yes, I just want to congratulate you because my head is spinning with all the data, so good job. I do have, I'll let others continue on the discipline questions. I have a couple of questions on the other topics. One is on absenteeism. Have we understood the causes? And it's something, I remember just every principal in their school improvement plan said that this is something they want to do something about. You know, I'm hearing from teachers that it's something they're, especially in the middle schools, are especially concerned about, and it's not just absenteeism, it's tardies, and it's kids that are leaving early. So, and I'm just curious if we're looking at root causes and things that can be done. So when we aggregate the data, you lose sensitivity to what's happening underneath it, and also are there specific subgroups that we're seeing the data worse than others?
So a part of what we will be doing is asking those questions, I think, to Ms. Smiley's point about asking parents and getting that information on what they feel like those barriers are, as far as maybe why they're out. I will say that for us, it's a matter of providing the education and bringing awareness, but I can't force Ms. Howes to send Johnny to school, you know what I mean?
Oh, I get it. I get it.
But as long as we are giving them resources, we're providing the education, we're telling them and saying, hey, this is why it's important, this is why we're calling you all the time, this is why we want you here. Our hope is that providing those resources and that education is going to increase. We know just by national research that barriers can be transportation, barriers can be negative attitudes towards school, not by the student, but by the parent. If they had negative attitudes or negative experiences in school, then they're less apt to feel like it's important for their students to be in school, caregivers to older parents or others that are in the home, so a number of reasons why across the board as to why attendance is high across the board. I think we're also just still trying to bring everybody back from not wanting to be remote, right? So just a number of reasons, I feel like our barriers are things that, just in research that says what barriers are to attendance, specifically to Orange County, we'll absolutely ask that question to figure out why.
Yeah, and just so, and I appreciate that, and I'm just curious really if, you know, and this is just a hypothesis, but do our elementary students more vulnerable to family situation? Are the middle schools and the high schoolers more, is it more the students' issue than the family issue? So, and I don't know, I have no idea, but I was just curious about what is the problem, and I think they're different, and I don't expect you all to have the answers. I love, by the way, the mental health. Thank you for that, for the mental health progress, and I love the referral process through Gaggle and then going to the clinics. That's fantastic. I'm curious why some centers, like Piedmont Health, is converting all the referrals into visits, but some of the others are not, and I was just curious if there's something about the quality or the nature of the referrals.
So Piedmont Health, what we have with them in their contract is they're somebody that is inside F1 Cheeks all day, every day, whereas our other agencies, they are sending their clinicians two to three times a week to do their caseload. Our clinician at Piedmont Health is basically a part of the F1 Cheeks family. She is there all day, every day, and is able to initially take everybody in and get that intake and get those sessions done a lot quicker, where, like I said, our agencies are not there as often.
Wow, so that's, you could call that a best practice within the district?
Right, and there is, there's differences with insurance as well, so we're able to take all of them. And then to Ms. Doyle's question, our partnership with Piedmont Health is at no cost to us. So we're able to, again, get them in, and they're able to see students very quickly.
Okay, and then, so I'll let somebody else go, I'll come back. Mr. Adolphen?
So thank you so much for you and your teams putting all this together. It's a lot of great data, and also I appreciate the Equity Task Force input on setting some high standards and goals on this. One of the things that I was curious about that others have hit on is the outreach and engagement. I know we talked about the campus portal, but I know that other schools are using Class Dojo, Talking Points, you have Max, GoFan, and I realize Remind, and all of those are all different little aspects, and how are we mapping this for parents? Like, you know, we're talking about go-to campus, you know, that's really great at middle school and high school, but at elementary, parents really depend, I believe, more on the Class Dojo. But I think if we are really going to try to get parents to engage, we've got to map this out and say, these are our methods, right? And then I think we also, I think it would be great value around something like, did you know? Like, this is what you can do in the campus portal, like, this is how you can look at the tardies, this is how you can look at it, because it's deep down in there where you find these things, and they're very valuable, and you'll, I think, us helping the parents be able to talk to their students in the same manner as their guardians and their children, talking about, you know, how they're doing in school, you know, can I help you with this? I think it helps those communications versus waiting till they get the report card and then trying to understand. On the chronic absenteeisms, I think one of the things that I think is fair to put out there for last year is we're still coming out of some very strong variants, and also I know there was a very high rate of respiratory issue, and when we talk about chronic absenteeisms, I guarantee you, most parents don't realize that their excuse absenteeisms can put them in there, especially if you were in the unlikely event of having both of those, and all of a sudden you're listed there and you don't even realize it. But I think a lot of the words like chronic absenteeism sets a kind of tone, especially with county commissioners and others, when they don't have the context of what does this actually mean, how are we trying to help parents? And I think also one of the things that's around this chronic absenteeism is how we engage the students when they're coming back. You know, how do we help them get their assignments completed or get their tests done and ensuring they get the time they need to do that, especially if they're out sick? But I know those are more comments, but those are just some things that stuck out to me as we talked through these and things that I've heard back out in the community about, you know, how to engage with us. And I think one last thing I'll mention is I think sometimes parents are confused about engagement at the district level versus the school level, and then what are we referring to when we say that? to when we say that? And I think that helps as well on trying to map it out for parents, what that looks like from our district. And I think one last comment is, in the events that I've attended, I just want to acknowledge, I really appreciate seeing all of our family liaisons there and with all the equipment, handing it out and checking people in and giving us a way to measure the effectiveness of it. Because I think that's very important, as many mentioned, on how do we know these are what our families are wanting. So, thank you.
Ms. Smiley?
Awesome. Okay. Just a couple of other things. I think so much of this data is really good. Like, I really like how you presented it. I really, you know, I usually have comments on data stuff. And I really appreciated all of that. I had a couple of thoughts about the Panorama data as we look at it in the future. One was noticing, like, there were these slight dips from the fall to the spring, sort of across the board. And in some roles in the past, I have administered, like, staff engagement surveys for organizations. And there's like this calendar pattern, right, sort of further in the school year, maybe everybody's a little tired. And so, it made me think, like, I wonder what our fall to fall, now that we have good participation, you know, I wonder what our fall to fall, spring to spring might look like? Because it kind of looks at a similar point in the year. So, that could be interesting to look at next year. And then, I also, the, I'm not sure about the, like, flagging things as a concern if they're under 50%. You know, there's some of those where I'm like, whoa, I want way more than 50% of kids to feel a sense of belonging or feel self-management or whatever, you know? And so, it made me wonder if there's like a different way to figure out, like, what are the red flags or priority areas or something, you know? Like, if we looked at, like, because I know Panorama has, like, I don't know if it's peer districts or national averages, I can't remember what it is. But they have comparison data, right?
Yes, their comparison data is national and then state and then schools of similar size and demographic.
Yeah. So, maybe there's something about the schools of similar size and demographics, like, are there places where we're kind of, where we are actually pretty far below? Or maybe there's some places to celebrate because we're doing much better. But in terms of some places to focus on, it's just a thought, thought for consideration. And just noting, though, that the self-regulation, the self-management was low for, like, across all grade levels. And just thinking about how important that is for learning, like, really, really important for learning. So, it makes me wonder if there's something there in what we should be doing. And then, a couple of us went to an event that El Centro Espino did this week, last week? I don't, what day is it? It's Monday. It must have been last week, where they presented a bunch of data about Latinx families and, or people and, and sort of how they're doing at this point and what the major concerns were. And it just raised all these issues around, issues that are concerns for many people right now, housing, food insecurity, like, just all these stressors, like, layers and layers of stressors right now. And so, one of the things I was thinking about coming out of that, and then it relates to, like, all of this work y'all are doing with, like, mental health and attendance and discipline and everything, is like, you know, we talk a lot on the academic side about, like, every single student, like, each individual student, and like, sort of having the individual plans and like MTSS and things like that. And a lot of what those external factors are, are sort of family by family. And it made me think, I bet we have, like, half as many families as we do kids, actually, in the school district. And it made me wonder if, whether we were, whether there was an opportunity to sort of, almost like MTSS on the, like, social work side, like, family by family, understanding, like, these different needs. And we can't solve job insecurity and housing, and we can't solve all those things. But in terms of understanding what families need, I know that, like, as a parent, sometimes at the beginning of the year from the school social worker, I'll get a form that's like, please check off the different things if you need them and return it. But I wonder if there's people that just don't return that form, that have those challenges. So, Dr. Jones, you looked like you were going to say something there.
I'll just add, you know, the amount of work that our schools do is incredible. And so, when we look at MTSS, we're not only looking at the academic side, we're looking at the social-emotional side, we're looking at behaviors, we're looking at getting to the root cause of what is causing little Johnny to struggle in school, either way, whether it's academic or it's behavior. And so, when we're looking at it on a higher level, we're looking at how we can utilize our support and resources at the district level to support schools. But day in and day out, our social workers, our counselors, our teachers, they're doing what they need to do to meet the needs of every child once they discover that there is a need. So, I don't want to, anyone to think that that's not already happening. But because we have limited resources, because we want to have community partners like Piedmont and Orange Partnership to kind of help us, we want to be more strategic in how we get aligned with some of our community partners to help our students. And so, we have to have an in-depth understanding of what's happening holistically. But if I walk into a school building right now, they could tell me, student by student, what they're doing to support them. But the strategic plan is to help us as a district, as a whole, to align those efforts. And so, we look at things here, but we can get as granular as we need to. And are we going to catch everything every day? No, we're not. If a parent doesn't fill out that form, that doesn't mean that the teacher doesn't sense that something is not quite there and that we don't do home visits, we don't call parents and investigate. Can we do that a little bit better? Sure. Do we have all the staff that we need to do that? No. That's why we need support from our community partners. But this, this plan at least helps us to align our efforts a little bit better and gives us some measurements so that we know whether or not we're doing well in an area. And our overall engagement will improve if we do all of the things to bring everyone to the table and do our best to meet the needs of our students. But just reality is that our resources are limited. But I just don't want us to overlook the work that's happening at every school, every single day in this district. And I just appreciate their work so much because a lot of times, they're bringing from their own resources and taking time from their own families to support one child or, or many children dependent on the need.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Ms. Howser?
Yeah, thanks. Yes. First, I just wanted to echo Will's comment about clarification of the role of the district and the role of the schools in communication with families. It's a, it's really important. Second, to Wendy's point about who's participating in the, in the portals, and even in the whole communication process, you know, we make this assumption, and I want to say, you know, I think the new website is fantastic. I think the social media presence that this district is building is really improving the brand. And I really appreciate all that. But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about reaching parents who, we assume they have a computer. They don't. We assume they have internet. They don't. We assume they know what questions to ask. They may not. And so, and that's why, you know, I love to talk about that readiness camp that we did years ago at New Hope. But what they did is, the kids came in the morning, then they, they got rid of them, and they brought the parents in, in the afternoon to teach them how to work with the school district. And so, it's a whole different level of education, you know, and to that. And I wonder if we have asked them. And I'm looking at Ms. Blevko, who has probably the premier network into our Spanish community in the county, possibly in the state. It is amazing. And so, can we use that network to ask parents what, what's on their mind? What do they need? What, you know, and do they really know how to work with? Do you think, I wonder how many of them know what infinite campus is or why it's important? So, so we're making assumptions that, and we're trying really hard to work with them, but we're making assumptions that they understand this language. And I just wondered if there's a way we could find out more about that. And then, finally, on the metrics, and just as, I'm a little concerned about losing visibility to subgroups because it's not all the same. Because we did that for so many years. And when we lose the visibility to the subgroups, then it's hard to see what, what's working and what's not working. So, so I'm just a little bit concerned about that. Maybe that's a district versus a board thing. But it's, but I really do like keeping visibility about what's happening with our subgroups. Great work, fantastic discussion. Very proud of the board and the conversation. I'm just proud of this conversation and this district is having it. It's the finest conversation we've had since I've been on the board. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing, if I could. Dr. Lanier said something early on when he was questioned about talking with students. And he said that this was coming up. And as I sit here and think about this, especially at looking at the code of conduct and, and the grade nine, grade six, and grade eight, where the, the infractions seem to rise, I'm thinking about how those conversations with students may give some insight into some of this. And I think that's very, a very important piece of this, especially for our middle school students and our high school students, to bring them into the conversation and ask them what they need. Ask them what they need to help them be successful, whether it's, and I know you're asking that on the Panorama surveys. But I think a conversation, going back to that relationship piece, if you can get some students to talk in a round table or just, you know, cafeteria, whatever works, just get some conversation with students. And I think you'll get a lot of insight into, to some of this. And I also go back to thinking about grade six, eight, and nine, because I've been heavily involved with all three of those. Is the student code of conduct being gone through with students in classrooms at the very beginning of the year? Because I know that when I was involved in it, my teachers went through with the students. And they made sure that they knew. And at some point in time, parents even had to sign that they had gone through the student code of conduct with them. And so, I'm just wondering if we've gotten away from that or if that's still something that is being done. Because for some students, it makes a difference. Just, just a thought that I have as I have sat here. But I think this is great. I think what you have done and all the data that you have given us tonight is helpful. And I think is a wonderful, you've got a good plan. And I want to applaud you all for, for the work, the, the people that have helped, the parents that have helped, and then the staff from Orange County Schools who has worked on this. It's, it's a mammoth job. And I appreciate all that you have done with this. So-
Ms. Purcell, thank you for the, the feedback and for the questions. There's one particular comment that you raised up that I would like to speak to. You, you mentioned the, like, listening to the students and perhaps having a roundtable. And that is, that is really important work. It is also what we're noticing with changes year over year with how we're addressing some of these infractions. We have noticed a drop in the use of restorative practices. And what you are, what you are getting at is also restorative work. That is, that is the restorative work. So, it doesn't just have to be a roundtable where we're hearing from a group of students. The student who is sitting in front of you because they're about to be suspended or they're about to have ISS, it's, the restorative work is more about repairing that harm and actively listening to the student as opposed to just kicking the bad behavior out and removing that behavior.
Absolutely.
So, it's deeply understanding why they did what they did, what the consequences are, and having them actively involved in the process of, of coming back into the school environment in a productive and meaningful way. So, I appreciate you bringing that up. I also want to raise, that I heard in a couple, from a couple of different folks, the issue with the parent portal access. And we hear that loud and clear. That's important. My mind is already spinning with some small ideas. So, I just, I want you all to know that we're going to take this back and have these conversations. One of the things that's already occurring to me is that during our, our sign-in process at our family academy events, like, we don't really, the idea of having a campus portal, parent portal, family event, like, that may not be the answer there. But we do have, like, a sign-in process where we're asking, okay, what child, what school does your child go to? We could easily throw in a question. And, you know, by the way, here's what parent portal looks like. Do you, do you have an account? Do you need some help setting up an account? We can, we can get, you know, some help for you if that, if that is necessary. There's some little things that we could perhaps do to start to improve those numbers.
Ms. Purcell, the only other thing that I will add, not to belabor the point, but I would just simply say that I, I think, in kind of taking in all of the feedback that the board has given us with this priority, I will say that I think a lot of, I think priority four in the rewrite that we're proposing for priority four and the action steps were needed to be able to lay a foundation in order for us as a district and also for schools and school leaders to be able to build upon, particularly around marketing their individual campuses and marketing their individual buildings. Through that marketing, then we will be able to, and, you know, through assisting, you know, with school administration and being involved in that, that they will be able to, and we will be able to as a district, truly, again, similar to what you're saying, go into, you know, teaching students around the code of student conduct. Like, when you were making your comments, I was thinking about camps. When I was a principal, that I used to, you know, have at the very beginning of the year at my school, I called it Pride Camp. And so, if students were coming, then I also required parents to come as well. So, while my student ambassadors were having conversations and taking students around on tours, families were required to come. And we, we taught them about these particular things. We talked to them about our instructional program, instructional framework, what the expectations were in classes. I gave a, you know, very descriptive and detailed presentation around interpretation of the code of conduct, what their rights were as parents, what they should come in and ask, you know, parents about when they came in and asked questions, you know, during a parent conference, all of those things. And I'll say that us launching our, you know, not trying to give a little, not too much away, but us launching our back-to-school event that we're trying to have with families, that's one of the launching paths for us to be able to do that. There will be a session on the importance of parent portal and signing up for that and all of the resources that you can receive. There will be a session that I will be conducting around, again, interpreting the code of student conduct. So, we hear you. And a lot of that discussion has, has occurred and happened as a result of, you know, meetings that we've had as a task force, meetings that we've had as a department. So, all of those things are, again, like I said, are in flux. But we needed this as the foundation for all of those things to be able to be built.
And I understand that. And I appreciate that. And as I said, I think it's a wonderful change in, in goal for a priority. I don't know why I keep calling it a goal, but a priority for the strategic plan. So, at this time, are we ready to vote on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the edits to goal four, priority four?
Second. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is passed. And again, thank you all for being here tonight and, and for doing such a wonderful in-depth presentation for us. It's excellent. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I can get my glasses on. We will go back to our curriculum for our math program. I can find it. Let's see. No, there's no presentation. Consent item six. Okay. I was working for a while. I'll get over here, too. All right. Ms. Smiley had some concerns. I'm not sure. Did anybody else have concerns and want to talk about this? Okay. Ms. Howser, Ms. Smiley?
Sarah, introduce it. Yeah, sure. Thank you very much for everything that was shared in the abstract. The reason that I asked to pull it, there are two reasons. And I'm thinking it could be helpful to just sort of describe our process for folks who don't know, for selecting new literacy curriculum a couple of- a couple of, three years ago now. There was a big literacy audit that found huge gaps in what we were doing. The board in a student achievement committee went through a three-hour, like, science of reading training. And then there was probably some more discussion about needing a curriculum. And then a process similar to what you all went through with the math curriculum, right? So like robust process, scorecard, committee scoring, community feedback. Like, a lot of similarity there. But there was a lot of sort of buildup to the need. And the board has talked some about the need for this curriculum. So like, I'm clear that we have a need. And I feel very strongly that it seems like you all had a great process for getting us here. So all of that feels really positive, but there was so much sort of leading up to it. And then when it was presented, there was sort of like a full presentation sort of explaining, you know, all of this. And so, and that included what the cost was and where the funds were coming from. And so, like, the first thing is, I'm just concerned. I understand it sounds like it's still in negotiation with the vendors. And I'm concerned about approving something where we don't know the cost. I'm concerned that approving it without the cost would hurt our chances to negotiate. I mean, the reality is, like, if it's going to cost $5 million, like, we're not going to approve, you know what I mean? So there's sort of the negotiation and what actually is the cost. And there's... In the abstract, it said state textbook funds and at-risk student funds. And so for the at-risk student funds, I'm like, I wonder what we won't do. I mean, we're using that money for other things right now. So understanding where those trade-offs might be and sort of what the total cost was. So that was sort of one piece. And then the other was just sort of understanding more about this particular curriculum. So those were the sort of two big things for me.
So I would like to just amend a little bit what you went through with the HMH or the literacy. So the presentation that was given to the board, we went back and looked through all of this to make sure we were following the steps. But the presentation that was given to the board was after the contract had been signed by the superintendent. And so we're, at the beginning, we're a little bit different here because we're asking for your approval to go into negotiations and good-faith negotiations with these vendors. We're bringing to you what the committee has approved, spent time on, and is making the recommendation to you. So this is like a little step for us to go forward to the next step in actually negotiating with these vendors. And then we would bring the contract back to you for approval.
So it doesn't put us in a worse position to be approving this right now? I mean...
No.
Okay, so the contract would come back with the final amount, at which point we would discuss the trade-offs and the things that we're not... Or do we have a sense right now of like what we're spending the at-risk student funds on now that we might not do, like that we might shift to this?
So we've actually planned for this this year and set aside some of those at-risk funds because of the need, particularly in the middle grades and in the high school, for clear, coherent, and standards-aligned curriculum. And so we know that math is a gateway. It keeps folks from achieving later on in life. And we want to make sure that's strong. So we have clear use for the at-risk money for the math funds.
So it's already budgeted for? And we're not like, not doing something else in order to pay for this?
Correct.
No, but I do want to add that we will continue to evaluate the programs that we're using and to make sure that they're effective. So some of... I don't want you to say, well, you said you weren't going to cut anything, but then we end up cutting a math program or two.
Please do.
Because if they're not... If we're not getting the return that we need there or it's not being utilized the way that, with fidelity, then we are going to start looking at some of that and pulling at that.
Yeah, and I'd say in addition to that, I mean, we often have a piecemeal of different resources that we're purchasing and that we're using. When you do adopt a core curriculum resource, they're often all encompassing and embedded in that. So that's where we would have trade-offs. For things that we typically purchase, we would be able to have those embedded in the core curriculum.
I just want to add, my questions, you know, what I saw in the agenda was the evaluation framework, but I never saw the actual evaluation. So you didn't tell us what the scores were, what the feedback was from the team. So it's just like, you know, I'm not used to that. I'm used to give it, to understand what's great, what's not so great, what some of the concerns were. So it's just not used to approving something based on a framework.
So would you prefer that I verbalize the ratings here or send the ratings to the board?
I'd prefer to see them. You know, I'd like to see, and I'd like to see what's some... And we've had pretty wide variations from people on some things that we've purchased. And then we've seen issues with adoption, with problems with adoption. So just wanted to know, what did the team think?
Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial if they could share some of that with us this evening. We do have that. But going back to what Dr. Pak said, they followed what was done previously with HMH. There was a signed contract prior to it being presented to the board. And those ratings were not included there as well. So we're happy to give those to you. I think they can share some of those tonight. But really, we're just trying to keep up with the cadence of how things have happened in the past.
Mr. Asper?
So to be fair, to Sarah's point, we were absolutely, at the beginning, talked about, this is what's going to happen. Here's kind of the vendors we're looking at. And then over the summer, the contract was signed. And the board came back and said, we have what? So just to be fair, it was signed after the fact. And then the board, I guess we re-approved it at that point just acknowledging that it was signed over the summer before the board was aware that it was completed. But I definitely would not use that model as going forward. But I felt the same way, I guess, was... It was kind of surprising because it says there were six. I was like, I don't even know who the six were. But not to say I would be qualified to evaluate them, but I just feel like I don't have the context of what we're approving. And it's not to say you haven't done great work. It's just, I think a little more data would help with context on it of what we're agreeing to.
So I do want to say, like, I don't want us... We're here representing the larger work of the committee of, up to 50... There were close to 50 people.
Forty people.
Forty people that were involved in this. So we're here representing all the work that they have done. We have those numbers, so we can go through them. We want to start with the reduction from the...
Yeah, so, you know, in phase... So we had two phases to this process. And so phase one of the process, we had 15 vendors that submitted proposals. You know, I will be remiss if I didn't take the time publicly to thank the committee members for the time that they put in. This is, it's a Herculean task to be able to go through what are generally multiple hundreds of pages per proposal. And we're asking, and we're trying to strike a balance here, where we wanted to make sure that we had, we were inclusive of all of our schools. So we wanted to have teacher representatives from all 13 schools. We wanted to have administrative representation across all levels, meaning elementary, middle, and high school. We wanted to have district representation. We wanted to make sure that student groups are exceptional children, English language learners, AIG, academically intellectually gifted, that they were all represented on the committee. So the committee, of course, knowing all those things, was going to be fairly large. So we had a 40-person committee. Because of the time commitment, thinking of how much goes into one individual proposal, the decision was made at phase one with 15 proposals that we would have a smaller subset of that committee. So that committee, the initial committee, had 10 district representatives on it. It also had math coaches, three math coaches that represented our K-8 level. And we also had multiple administrators representing K to 12. That committee worked together using the rubric that was attached. I believe it was attachment B in the abstract. We were able to whittle down those 15 to a final group of six. All right, that final group of six, two of those vendors were proposing a K-12 curriculum resource. Two of those vendors were proposing a K-8 resource. And then one vendor was proposing a grade 9, 12, or a high school resource. Okay? So at that point, we entered into phase two of the process. That's when the larger committee convened. We used, I believe it's attachment C in the abstract, which is an Ed Reports-aligned instructional materials rating criteria. So that committee was tasked with six finalists that they were reviewing. Are we okay to go through, like, naming?
I will say, back on phase one, I think it's important for you to know that some, you know, there was a... We didn't just say, all right, these six. There was a discrepancy in scores. The six really rose up to the top. And then there was a clear cut, and then the rest did not. And a big piece of that was looking for a K-8, a minimum K-8 resource. So some of our folks that put in an RFP were just K-5. And that didn't get us to the K-8. And so they didn't score as high. But that was, the way that we ended up with the six was a clear rising to the top. And so then these six are the ones that we...
Yeah, and so the six that rose to the top were Savis, which is envisioned math, and that was a K-12 proposal. McGraw-Hill Reveal Math, which is a K-12 proposal. HMH Into Math, which is a K-8 proposal. Great Minds Eureka Math, a K-8 proposal. Curriculum Associates I Ready was a K-8 proposal. And I may have misspoke earlier if I said there were two K-8s, there were three. And then Coherent Math, which was the 9, 12 proposal. So those were the final six. At that point in time, we went through an extensive process using that rating criteria. But we wanted to make sure that there was ample time for the committee to not only be able to review and writing those written proposals, we also had every vendor come in for a full day, brought the entire committee together so that they each had an opportunity to present to the committee in full. We also provided, each committee member had the vendors provide them demo accounts so that they were able to actually navigate and access the platforms from a teacher and a student perspective to kind of see that comparison across each. And then through the process, we made sure that we continued to extend time as needed. So it's noted in the abstract, but there was a three-week additional extension as we worked through that process to make sure that the committee had enough time. Because once we received those ratings for the six vendors, we had two at each band that bubbled to the top. And so Savis, Envision Math, across the K-8 span, so the K-5 ratings and the 6, 8 ratings, they were the top choice in both of those levels. So when combined, they had the highest at that time. HMH Into Math had the second-highest rating at that time, and that was at the K-8 band, so K-5 and 6, 8. At the 9, 12 level, we had two that were the highest. Savis Envision Math was also, was second there. The highest rated there was Coherent Math at the 9, 12 level. And so at that time, we went through a protocol with the committee to really highlight what are the strengths, kind of what are the next steps with these potential top-two resources. We then gave them additional time to go back and view the materials. The materials were publicly displayed at the Orange County Schools Welcome Center. And that was not only for the committee. That was for Orange County Schools staff. That was for community members, excuse me, to be able to come. We did do that over multiple days. But that was a part of, and that was a part of the original voting on these six, to whittle it down to two. Once we whittled it down to two, we actually brought those materials back out again for the committee to go back to look at those top-two resources more in-depth and then to give them an opportunity to come back with an actual final vote. And so at that time, when the final voting occurred at the K-8 level, okay, so this was K-5 and 6, 8 at the K-8 level, the top choice was Savis Envision Math, and it received 70% of the votes, okay? There were 8% of the votes that were, that went for HMH Into Math. So 70%, 70.8% were for Savis Envision Math. 8.8% were for HMH Into Math. There were also 8% of the committee votes said they were satisfied with either resource. And then there were 11% that said they weren't content moving forward with either resource. Okay? So in looking at that at that time, as we went through and deliberated, where we are at this point is we are making a recommendation based off, kind of in totality. So we had roughly 80% of the committee was content with Savis Envision Math being the top recommendation. And so that's why we moved them forward. At the 9, 12 level, Coherent Math received 64.3% of the vote as a positive yes. Savis Envision Math received 14% of the vote at the 9, 12 level. We also had 21% of the vote that said they were satisfied with either resource. And then there weren't any folks that voted at the 9, 12 level that said they weren't satisfied moving forward with one or the other. So when you're looking at that in a combination for Coherent Math, that is roughly 85% of the committee that voted for the 9, 12 were satisfied with Coherent Math as the recommendation for the 9, 12 level. And so that's what led us to this point.
Having followed up with the leaders.
Yeah, and so I think a big piece, and thank you to Dr. Pak for making note of this. So we have, you know, folks on our team. One thing that we wanted to make sure we were very clear about in the debrief process with the committee, we said going into this process, like, this is a super challenging process because every one of these finalists, if, you know, you can look at Ed Reports or different things, they all are high-quality. We did a lot of pre-vetting across this process to see that most, if not all, of these resources are being used in different districts across our state to different varying levels of success. And so we knew going into the process, we're very clear with the committee that to get to where we're at 100% of everyone saying like, this is my top choice, isn't often likely. But we also want to make sure that we're honoring what is being said to us through those ratings. So what was told to us through those ratings is that we did have a small subset of the committee that was not satisfied at the K-8 level with moving forward. And so it was shared with them multiple times that at any point in time, if they wanted to come and have not only one-on-one discussions with us, myself, me, I'm going to name me, they could certainly do that. But we also did follow, circle back with them as well, members of our team, just to make sure that they were at a place of, are you okay to move forward if this is indeed something that moves forward to the board? And the answer to that was yes. And so we feel good about that at this time to be able to move forward with that.
Ms. Smiley?
Thank you for your time and the explanation. My concern was, the clarification is better now. My concern was, like, I didn't want to sign up to just give you a blank check. So with you explaining that is simply to go into negotiation, it makes me feel better. Thank you for all the work you did.
Ms. Smiley? Yeah, and I appreciate that process and hearing sort of where the committee landed and all of that. So thank you for explaining that. I think the other piece I would just love to hear a little bit more about, just so we are all going clear-eyed into this. You know, with a literacy curriculum, we were pretty clear that we were like on the wrong path. And then there's very clear science of reading, and we are very clear on what the right path is, right? And with math, there's less clarity about that, right? There's like the math wars, and there's different ways of teaching math and all of that. And so, like, being clear that no one curriculum is perfect or anything like that, like, I would just love to understand a little bit more about these curricula that you're recommending. Like, where do they sort of fall in terms of that, like conceptual, explicit instruction? You know, like, I'm probably not even using the right terms, but like, in the sort of like grand scheme of the math wars and the different approaches to teaching math, like, how do these curricula, what can we expect from them in terms of like what students and teachers will be doing?
Yeah, so all great questions. I think, looking at this, I do want to make sure that I'm honoring the feedback that the committee provided. So we'll take Savis Envision Math to start with. So like, strengths that were noted from the committee is the language supports that are provided throughout for our ML students, accommodations that are provided digitally, and like interactive tools that the resource provides, that they're using math practices in an intentional way, that it's visually appealing. It's engaging with both print and digital materials that will capture attention of today's learners. That the core lesson structure is the same from kindergarten through eighth grade. So it provides that kind of coherence and consistency that we've been looking for, that it integrates with Canvas, Infinite Campus, Google. So there are those pieces. And then in addition to some of those traditional face-to-face and the virtual PD options that you get with this, like, there's an ongoing professional development through short videos for each topic throughout the curriculum, which actually gives examples and models of like how to teach effectively. And so for teachers that are new to teaching content, you know, it supports them. It also supports teachers with time constraints when we're thinking of all the things we're juggling if you need something that's more quick when it comes to PD. And I think a big piece, too, is in addition to that feedback, like, we've communicated with other districts that have been in partnership with this resource. with other districts that have been in partnership with this resource, this vendor. And so, you know, one thing that was noted by a district we spoke with is that they have a long-term partnership, they've credited the resource with supporting multiple schools and moving out of low-performing status. They credited the resource that it's been a huge support for new and beginning teachers, and as well as supporting alternative licenser teachers, because that's been such a growing number for them, and this is a resource where it actually helps to equip and support those folks. So the question as far as like explicit, so it has elements of both when you think of conceptual and explicit. Now how we then choose, the curriculum shouldn't drive what we're doing, like, we're making those decisions as a school district with our, our kind of workforce to decide like what's best for Orange County schools. But we know that this provides us with the resource to be able to kind of pick and choose areas that we want to utilize and leverage the curriculum to get to where we want to go with student achievement, if that makes sense for Envision Math. And so coherent math, it is a newer resource, okay? So they did, they partnered with Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools in 2021 to actually write this curriculum resource. And it's the first, you know, at the high school level specifically, to be aligned to North Carolina, like integrated standards. And so, yeah, and it aligns, and Dr. Pak, great point, it aligns with the block scheduling structure. It, it also has an element or feature in it that aligns with if you're in a year-long, so if you're in a middle school Math 1 concept, that can be broken out to where it's more of those 45 to 55-minute lessons to fit like a middle school Math 1 structure. And so, a few things that the committee said, you know, there's a lot of opportunity with it for like collaborative discourse amongst students. The digital units can be accessed free online, all right, so there's, there's a free element to it. The responsive strategies that are provided throughout the units were very helpful. There were techniques that were very useful to our, for our teachers to assist learners, students with disabilities, this was noted by the committee. And then districts that we've spoken with have noted how helpful it is to not have to pick and choose at the high school level and pull from across different contents to kind of piece your pacing and resources together. This like fully aligns Math 1, Math 2, Math 3. And so beyond our district, you know, in, in speaking with coherent math, but with other districts, that it's, they're very flexible, willing to personalize their supports. Other districts have raved about the professional learning component to us. Their understanding of what it means to teach like high school mathematics in North Carolina is something that other districts have found very valuable. And, and they've also noted that like in addition to the Black Line Masters that are public or they are open resource, we would want to start the process by investing because we want to, we want to have that coherence in materials and trying to level set about what our expectations are, that continuity for all teachers. But over time, as an open resource, there, there's flexibility there in options where we would be able to also look at, how can we then start to piece things together using, using that resource? But right now, I think it's more about improving pedagogy. It's about, you know, rethinking how we teach math, but then actually having those materials in place to create that continuity is where we're at with 912. Yeah, so I hope that answers...
It does, yeah. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I was a little, when I was looking at the 912, the, it's based on the illustrative math kind of models, it's super collaborative, conceptual, conversation-based. And so I worried a little bit about like, some students with learning differences really benefit from like explicit instruction and might struggle in that context. And so, like, does it include additional sort of like supportive resources along those lines? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, well, and I think we would need more time to dig into it, into those resources as we move forward. I think one big piece with the personalization, when you're thinking of the professional development and the support, their ability to walk alongside us so that we're able to build out a process that fits with what our goals are is super important. So as a district, we've been very clear this year in PD, professional development, that explicit instruction is the direction that we're moving. So we want to make sure that the curriculum can help us get to that place, but we get to drive that conversation as we're working with the vendor to build that out.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Ms. Howser?
I really appreciate this, this information, it's very helpful. Just on the conversations with the other districts that are using it, was that, did the entire team talk to their peers in other districts? Was there a consideration of a visit, but about the product, about the implementation, and about the transition to the new curriculum?
So the vendors provided references that all of the committee members had access to. We then, myself, Dr. Gammon, and Ms. Cobb, our math specialist, sat down and called folks that we knew in that district to get a little bit deeper, you know, hey, what's the real story kind of thing? And so, and, and one of the districts did invite us to come, but it's not great timing because districts are beginning their, their testing. And so, we, we will be doing that to see it in action to help kind of frame what we're doing, but that'll have to be a next year thing.
So that would be more to help with the implementation?
Correct.
As opposed to the decision to...
Any other questions?
I like the, the idea that it's designed for block scheduling. I haven't seen that before in anything, so that, that sounds great.
It's also very difficult, like, I think Dr. Gammon said, we end up piecing together different resources and curriculum to match what the standards are for Math 1, 2, and 3 in high school. And it is just not helpful at all. Either teachers scrap it all together and come up with their own plan, or they get, they spend time pulling these resources together.
And I think that's, and maybe you might say this better than me, but like, one of the things that we are excited about with a 912 curriculum is, particularly this one, is that the time that folks have been spending going out, and really the K8, going out and finding their own stuff, can be replaced with digging into this curriculum and being prepared with this curriculum. And so, we can eliminate some of the time that teachers are out there, you know, Googling and searching and finding things.
And that's, that's very important, as we all know.
So, yeah, Mr. Asper, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you. The context really helps, especially understanding, you know, where people landed and people feeling either, and then how you narrowed it down, and the resources and all the questions that were answered really helps the context of what, what y'all are looking at and definitely moving us in a direction that we need to go with all of the challenges we have. So I just wanted to say thank y'all and all the committees that have been working on this.
Yeah, and I'll say, we'll, we'll have, we'll consider that moving forward when we go back and take a look and try to, you know, frame things the way that they've been brought to you. I mean, practically all of us are new. And so, well, hopefully we're not looking at another curriculum in the next few years, but we'll be mindful of that. I think our goal was to make sure that we honor the work of this committee. They have worked so hard. It is a lot of tedious work to get to a point where we have a high percentage of members that are okay, because we're gonna have to have that buy-in in order for us to have the implementation into the explicit instruction piece. And I know Dr. Gammon mentioned it, but we are full-fledged, ready to go in and give more professional development on explicit instruction. And our current math curriculum that we have is not quite there, and so that's where we really saw a need to make a shift as well, along with some of our math scores that we're able to see across the board.
I'd like to move to move forward with this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have our blessings.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other business tonight that we need to discuss? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.